Accounts payable in the amount of two million eight hundred forty one thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars twenty one cents. Happy discussion on that, or just any other items? Motion to accept, so moved second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting our accounts payable in the amount of two million eight hundred forty one thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars twenty one cents? In the first. Not opposed. Next.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Online, they requested that we move the mics a little bit closer to you when you speak because they can't hear us. Thank you so much.
Morgan. Get down my activity list. Or just. They're being done for the reference. For lighting, hearing a lot of cat and dog, and then moving pipes clean. It's kind of touch of all the rest of. Rose needed. Is there any questions? Throw the bridge.
I can set that one, it's probably more for Eric, the south by any. Thought for. When you starting now?
Uh, based on how long it was gonna take that to get manufactured, land specific, if you're gonna do it in the spring, rather than trying to cram it into the fall. But we're still gonna have it done by April fifteen.
Okay, the ditch on me is pretty hot this morning, they're not doing anything yet, and he said by April, there'll be water in that beach, so.
Okay, yeah, well, be right on it. I've been in touch with him, told him by April fifteen, we will have that ready to run water on that.
Exactly.
Some questions? River Road project was out there yesterday, that one's that's. They're getting ready to all crush base on that, so. Way better than. Turn out nice. Waste management, we're. We got that extension, so we can. Kind of got that, Eric got that state, so we're kind of wanting on. Get where our bills are, they end up to do the, you know, start that other level, so that's. Everything there's going there is, we got one level of CD all done, now we're starting off. Second, then we'll move everything up on that level, so everything's been good. The waste match, nothing, the bay was working really good and go, and updates, it's like brand new again, so that's, that's a big plus. And that golf course, we're. Got all the sprinklers blown out. First shot now, so open Tuesday through Saturday, nine to six, kind of moving into winter, both we got. Do the winter apparel, a bunch of golf stuff for retailing, can drop off to clubs, and we're redoing. Then we can extend, putting new handles on them, we're doing that stuff. Putting in a bunch of drainage right now, you have that down, got some fence under we're doing. On the side, we're spraying that, we'll get the rains all covered, so we're just pretty much. Got that driving range still open, while the weather's still nice, they can still go play on drive range, doing some cart work. Turn out where the roots are, so kind of busy over there right now, try to do what we can, till the ground freezes. But on track there. You know, Eric's got some stuff. True stuff, feelings, that's really all I have. Thank you. Any question for the debate? Anyone online with questions?
Maybe I got one question, Billy. So on the north side out there, industrial site, did they get them pans cleaned out there like next?
They're gonna redo.
Yeah, I've seen that. So how will that, will they slow, how will the pans, and if it's that much higher than the existing road right now, house and spans?
The road was like three foot higher, so it was. Where they were coming up, it'll still, it'll still have a pretty nice drop. It just won't be as bad when they're coming in and out, it was a trust.
So how far will those pans be from, say the?
You know, you know, they're in order from, Shane was telling me they're gonna work from, kind of just way was before.
Alright, thanks.
Just got the project up, please, chip seals all done, they're, with the nice weather this week, they're gonna finish up painting, hopefully. That project to be a wrap, we got a big pay request for that one this week, it's been missing one typically on the chip seal, they just do on favorite places. Towards the end to clean everything up. Oh, the other thing I have is final payment for the industrial site. Project and the closeout change order, we came in three grand under. Budget, which is, likes to be a little further under, but that's still better for his. Calculation errors on my end, and then there's the. Material didn't shrink like I thought it was going to. So. I have the final change order for the chairman to sign to close that project out. Just it's more of a bookkeeping thing than anything else. But the project turned out well, it's handled, the storm didn't come through, and it's doing its job, so see, which is. Really talk about the East River Road, everything's going well. They're refilling the waste areas right now this week, hopefully reseeded. And there's that project up. So the only thing I'll need, would be the approval of that change order. Have that signed, and then that industrial side project will be, be complete.
Change order that was referred is part of the package, the back end, you had the payment estimate summary. Pass around to people to review it if you'd like, to solve any issues. Make sure directly. Any suggestions pertaining to this? Motion to accept the change order in the amount of. Three thousand fifty nine dollars for a change, total amount of four hundred sixty three. Thousand five hundred eighty six dollars. Have a motion at their second?
A second.
Got a motion and second, any further questions pertaining to this? Motion to ask. Any opposed? That's pretty much all the other things that I could have. Thank you. Andre, please.
Morning.
Morning, Andre.
I don't have tremendous amount today, I got a pan, two things that we. I'm working on, I got none, I'm still working on the lights over at the library, and it's one of them. We got the base in, the walls not at the end of the. Traditional lights in the entrance and level group. It's pretty dark back there. The vondorap bathrooms, I think they're either done and nearly done, I've been down there quite a bit, we got all painted on, they have these in. They're functional again. It looks like there's some flying that's going, so we've been talking about that. Older fire hall, we got the heater in yesterday. And it's a good thing, because we'll be out there to do it. Heater that they're being used to. Kind of keep a good temperature of the air. Back, and so we, we got that one fixed, and then it's all new ones, so they're, they're good to go. Then. I think I recall someone saying something about the. Brown schools over at Samba, early, and the foundation, I went over there, and it was not, I'm in one hall. I walked the whole place around, but I think that might have been. Someone, someone a while back, but I.
I brought it up, it's been a couple years ago that I was over there.
Oh, I, I had leading best go after, it's probably the first time you brought it, I couldn't remember who brought it up, but I. I had been going there after that, they set traps and stuff, but I walked it a week or two ago. Not even my own. It might have been old, on the line of that. And then another thing I brought in, I know that we've discussed, I know I've discussed this professionally before, was this. Battery backup system down in basement, there's an old one down there, and it's, I mean, you really don't, you have to replace it. And it's taken, you know, it feels like an eternity to get this, well, but. It's tw- it's twenty three thousand, twenty two nine fifty. How to replace the current one down there, and it's the one that backs up like all the bomb systems and stuff, there's. I'm not sure everything, at least in the problem, you know, everything is backed up, but. I think that thing's probably close to a hundred years old, twenty thirty years old. And so I got a quote, the first one I got was like sixty seven thousand. And another one, twenty nine, and this one, what's quoted here replaces exactly what's there, so it's the same. And it's by the company that services the one that's in the other part of the basement, with the sheriff's department, that you use for services. So. I don't have, I, you know, I didn't plan on my budget to replace this, because I had no idea what it would cost, matter of fact, I was anticipating probably close to fifty thousand, but. I don't, I mean, I can probably handle it in my budget, I may need a budget adjustment fee here, or we could wait until you're doing. I need you guys to send it to her, down to me, to be done.
So is it just be better in Lisa's budget, or in your budget? Is it more of an N A T issue?
Well, yeah, it's definitely in real house, she knows what it runs, and what really needs to be there, I was just trying to help out by giving the quote. As a thought, make the decision, since it's not budgeted.
Thoughts in regards to that?
Is your reason for replacement just due to age, or has there been some issue?
Um, I mean, it's, if it fails, it could damage a lot of her systems. Should, it needs to be this overlap of time before the generator starts, it has the power that's done until the generator gets going, otherwise.
So how do you test that equipment?
So when Eaton comes out, and they service that stuff, they replace batteries, and they test them.
So very important on previous tests.
I don't have anything like that. It's pretty ancient, they don't even make that. It's. Pretty bad shape, this is something to keep the product years ago, so. I, I think it would be better if you guys talked to Lisa about it, what she thinks, but. She thinks mine, her one house in mine, true.
Is this an immediate issue, or something that we should address at our next meeting, let's even be step present?
Yeah, we can talk about it, it's only an immediate issue if it fails.
Are, are we at that point?
I mean, it could, I mean, it's. I wish I had a picture of that, I showed you.
So how else can we give them a test of Eaton?
Um, they tell. It's a heavy wall, it's a.
So can we see their last annual report at the next meeting, or did they get their report?
I'll see.
You know, the bottom line is, if it goes out, we have a lot of problems associated with this.
Yeah, probably very expensive problems, but this is on the page, she might not be able to tell you.
Chairman, she is on, would you like me to see if she's available to talk, Lisa?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I, I wasn't aware that we were looking at replacing this UPS, it's, this UPS sits down where our main core. System is, where our internet comes in, so. It is older, I mean, those big UPSs, I mean, fif- typical, they last fifteen years, this one is considerably older than the one in the sheriff's department. It probably definitely needs replaced, but the only thing is, is you don't like your equipment to go down hard, you like to have. You know, a few minutes or whatever to kick over to the generator. So sometimes if that equipment goes down hard, it, it won't reboot normally, so you want to have time to be able to. Shut things down if for some reason the generator doesn't kick on. But we have not had any issues with it so far, it's just older and needs replaced, but we have not had any issues with it.
Thank you, Lisa, any questions for Lisa? So, Mr. Chairman, so I'm, I'm kind of curious if. If I can turn your information before, well, I've learned almost this about up there in my session, so we're good at what we're asked of.
I have been trying to get a quote on this thing for probably close to a year already. So these big companies, they, they're not, so their, their service department is expert, we really like the. The service guy that comes out and takes care of this stuff, there's only a few companies that do, that supply these things, they're not, it's, we, Eaton is a massive company, and. Getting someone to even come out here and look, because I wanted them to come out and look at what we have. So they could replace exactly what we already have, I couldn't even get someone to drive out here and look at it, I mean, I can't even explain it, I want to say, about emails, and. I went through free sales reps. They just, they don't feel like that's a big enough amount of money to lend to Carol, which I don't think, but their service department is good, and that's. More important to me than the rest of it, is, is that's the person that we all do. Happens.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but.
It has been addressed, and I have, and it's been brought up into the commission before about this, you know.
But I'm saying, you're thinking, as important as it hardly is, now, because there are some issues. I was wondering if it's possible to move forward and say that at some point, we're gonna have to fix this, or somebody's left to take care of it. It's never been.
Well, it's hard to put it in so much, if we can't get it.
No, no, I can't, but I'm. You, you can throw out. A number, look at it, say, yeah, choose your, let's do it now, have it there, if you need it, you got it. Now we're gonna be looking. Take care of it, you say.
Twenty three thousand.
Twenty three thousand, yeah.
And then, and like I said, the other quarter, I was sixteen something, and I didn't bring that. So much more.
So it is, it's safe to assume, why is that? It's safe to believe that twenty three thousand will grow exponentially by the time we get it all done, so we need to be looking at that kind of. Another probably thirty percent of that.
I, I, you know, this is the first time I've ever pressed one of these out.
I'd like to interject, if I could. Typically, we have to, which. I'm sorry, the, the issue with the UPS that was brought up in the previous commissioner meeting was the one in the sheriff's department. We looked at replacing that one because of the radio system, we have since done something totally different, so we don't have that issue anymore. Where we have battery backups up in the mezzanine, this UPS is a totally different UPS, which is considerably older. But we need to establish what the load is on it. All the equipment, you have to establish what equipment is on it, and how much load that takes, and then that determines. How much money you put into it, for how long it keeps it up, if it keeps it up for three minutes, and if it keeps it up for an hour. That's where the money costs, typically, some, the, the big one that we're looking at in the sheriff's department, when we originally budged that for the fire department. That was fifty thousand dollars. I haven't, Andre just brought me this quote on the one that he's looking at, I haven't evaluated. The load and the equipment on there, so we need to kind of go through that to get you an exact number. Of how long we want to keep it up before it kicks to generator, and that'll determine how much, how much money it'll be, but. Typically, those big, typically, those big ones get into higher dollars, and, and you can buy battery banks, you know, you can buy big racks of batteries. And we can start with, you know, and expand on those too, the newer technology lets you, you know, expand as you need.
Would you be able to have a. Quote available for us at the next meeting, Lisa?
Um, yeah, I can see, I can reach out, I had some representatives that I had talked to on this previous project, I think there was an Eaton. Representative in Salt Lake, I can maybe see about getting some quotes, or I can look online to see different, different vendors, but.
Please, please take a little bit of time and coordinate with Andre, please, let me spend some time researching this, and. If you're able to get something together for next meeting, in case there's an add-on that we're missing, I'm ready.
Yeah, because I, I didn't, I didn't plan on this in my budget either, so. I hadn't planned on replacing it this year, so.
Regardless, if, if it's something sensitive, if it appears, it needs to be replaced.
So I just, just so you know, I don't have community knowledge of this stuff, and neither, no one in my department does, except for, you know, just maybe. Power consumption with, you know, with school, with the electrician, I honestly was just getting this because I knew it needed to be done, and so I. I just wanted to get it, so I.
I appreciate.
Just wants supposedly thirteen minute, but that all depends on how much it's going, that's about as far.
Appreciate your efforts, Andre, if you'd be kind enough to share the information you have with Lisa, she'll be able to follow up, I don't, spring to her department. Thank you for doing that, Andre, thank you, Lisa.
I got one question.
Please.
Mr. Chairman. So on the Ben Davis bill, that six thousand, where was that painting at?
The four H.
Okay.
The painting that whole building, it was in pretty good action. And that was something we love doing for it.
And then the gate's all done, or what's the apps there?
The gate is ready to be functional, just that, the lady over there, still sees the program, but not her computer stuff, so. I can't do that more.
That lady at the four H, or?
Yeah, you know, secretary over there, she's gonna be issuing out the cards, so I gave her, she's been emailing, we said we're gonna get that on there, and then once that's done. She will issue out the cards to all the people, and then she's going to call me, email me, let me know that it's completed, and then we'll close the gate and turn it on.
So I'm not putting you on the spot, but, so, like, they'll have random cards they hand out to people sometimes?
Yeah, it's kind of same card rear system we have, they say, and they, they can issue the cards out. The system will keep track of each out of cards, and someone they need to delete a card, they can just delete it from the computer, it won't work on the.
Like when the kids got livestock, have to give them a temporary card or something?
No, it's not even temporary, they can give them that card, and then once they're no longer needing access to that place, she can just delete it.
That's what I meant by temporary, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know how temporary is over there, how long.
Yeah, okay, all right, I just wondered how it's progressing.
I mean, it's ready to go. Because she gets the program.
The, the program is running, the account has been set up for Amy, I have issued her card. All maintenance can, all their cards will work on the gate if we activate it, I just got to get Amy trained up on. How to log into our S two system to where she can issue those cards. With her separate login.
Thank you for that. Thank you so much. Sheriff Clear, I don't see it on the agenda, is there something pressing you need to address?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm just here to help represent the emergency.
Up next is the Ice Arena budget. This year, we've had great reduction in budget from prior years, because of that, what I proposed is that we need all departments that are fully in the basis. And take a look at where we're riding financially with that department comparison to last year's budget as far as expenditures. Last year's expenditures for the same times period, and push that back to our existing budget to see how we're. Looking as far as if we're reaching our goals. It's not to put managers under a microscope, it's so we can take a look at where we're at today. And not wish at the end of the year, we had done something proactive to. For the retail cost. And by doing this, it gives us, as commissioners, the opportunity to see the different department heads and managers. And find out what the pressure points are that they face. On a regular basis, so it's not a review in any. New review sense, it's where are we at, how are we doing? We need to make modifications, and we'll make suggestions accordingly. That's the beginning of the overview of it. And so, that's a hot seat grant, which is good. So what has been prepared by. Commission, and as we put together, Ice Arena first quarter spending, Eric's in twenty five. This being twenty five versus this bill you did twenty six, and we have a way to put that on for people online to do this, is that correct?
Um, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to share that online, but they have access to it in the links if they're joining from our website.
Thank you. So if I take a look at this. The general overview, and then we can go back to some questions, and fiscal year first quarters, twenty five. Our expenditures were ninety five, ninety one thousand dollars and change. This year, the first quarter of fiscal year forty six, this is July first to September thirtieth, is what we're comparing this year, July first to September thirtieth last year. Our expenditures are a hundred eight thousand five hundred approximately. So at this point in time, we're looking at seventeen thousand dollars increase in expenditures. And so what we want to do is, is take a look on items like this, whomever the department head is, and identify where are we, where we spending, where we're overspending. If it's just the time of the year expenditures that are coming into play. And when we take a look at. When we take a look at the overall expenditures of a hundred and eight five thousand for this order, this is not. Including. The Ice Rim Rover floor. And that was for how much?
I have the total on that.
Yeah, it was eighty thousand, more than that.
No, it's like one thirty five.
Okay, one thirty six, I'm sorry, as I told, fiscal year expenditure of one thirty six, six thirty five. So it would be. Twenty eight, twenty thousand approximately, is that what I'm looking at for the?
That's our commencement, correct, Andre?
Yes.
It's, we did a bunch of that amount and it has been.
That's on, in my project.
So clearly, we have a chance to take a look at the expenditure comparison. And then in addition to help categorize different expenditures, uh, we put together the. Individual costs that were paid out for the time period um, first quarter of twenty six. And in this, do you have any questions in this regard?
Rink supplies, that's something that just hits this time of year, I suppose, I mean, that's the biggest increase overall.
Yeah, that's just, I think it's kind of a swing, it's whatever we.
Yeah. When we take a look at it, uh, we have an increase in salaries for this fiscal quarter of eleven thousand five hundred increase. Um, have we had added more employees bring in, or what are we looking?
We were down. The previous quarter, something like that point. He got hired in September, yeah. That whole, that year. And there was a, there was that in places for his employees as well.
We take a look at this, and you're, you're interesting because uh, we actually had. The fact that the presentation came into an interest that they had in perhaps. Working with Tommy on. Problem that we had. Or issues that we may have had, uh, should have resolved, but maintenance after the, you took the arena. And in the course of doing that, they came up with several items that I found. Greatly interesting and I thank and commend them for putting that together. And if we don't address it, then I think shame on us. But for the comparative analysis that I'm looking at, it shows uh, Casper, Quoche, about Larrabee, Mindell, Rock Springs and Sheridan. And there are several things that I can't say that. It's good or bad, other than things that we need to be aware of. And then put to the forefront of how do we make uh, the Ice Arena. So the uh. So the income coming in. Be more beneficial to us to help offset the expenses. In the illustration we put together by PEC, it showed that our revenue was forty thousand dollars. Compared to other revenues that vary from two hundred and six thousand to four hundred and seventy six hundred thousand. So with that, we have a four hundred thousand dollar shortage we can happen to from some of the other places. And I'm not saying that we can meet that, but it's something that we can look at, say, how can we maybe enhance our insurance policy? And then when we look at staff. Again, it's not slightly wrong, but what I find interesting is that we have four full-time people. And the other counties typically runs from two to three with, are the balance of the help. Is part-time individuals, a candidate could be because of population, but they have more people available to work. It's a number variable, I'm not saying that anything's correct, but something to be cognizant of, as we need forward. About three years ago, possibly two years ago, uh, the board of commissioners discussed having uh, going from uh. Maybe nine or ten month season on ice, make it full time to the summer months. Uh, for a year and to see if that had any adverse effect on expenses or if it increased our cash flow. And, but this comparison put together force shows that for the most part, only Asper is running at. Twelve months of the year. We're at ten with the lowest of seven at Larrabee. So are we. Keeping our facility open more than we should? And if we were to consider reducing the number of months, would we have a, a less expenses? Of course, but would the expenses increase because the turnout of equipments might require additional maintenance because of the downtime periods?
Um. I think the main thing you would save money on if you did that is just the, the electricity. For the most part, because running those compressors in the summertime, they run quite a lot harder than, than the run.
Thank you for that, Andre. Um, then we get into programs. And then, and I think we, you've seen what I've looked at yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh, programs, we're looking at uh. Several of the other facilities offer. Different programs outside of Conti, where both Cody and ourselves not have anything. Perhaps we should look at creating something like that in the life, depending on if there's some interest. Uh, then again concessions. Across the board, we're the only one that has no restrictions. Uh, junior team again is the same, uh, known junior team. Perhaps there is no viability for that with us. Then users groups, of course, it shows um. Different. You show Pigeon Street, youth hockey, archery club, and there's a couple of others floating out there with. Couple of the teams. We're the only ice rink that has a. We don't appear to have any interaction with the school as far as a school group coming over, over to youth hockey, there we go.
Well, I actually, it's not a frequent thing, but they do throughout the years come randomly for. You know, the honor society, things like that, but it's. One of those where I have looked into it, I kind of started in this year, but it's like, if the PE class is at nine AM. Sure, now we're working employees at nine versus eleven thirty, but it was like, I don't have. Like fifty pairs of feet, all the same size, if that's a date, there's kinds of doing there. And so it's kind of hard to juggle if we want to spend a couple thousand dollars on skates. Get all, you know, the original, all half-size, saddle shoes, the rental skates and things.
I appreciate that, it's about like, something that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, and we've been having preschool groups, it's all along, but I try to go, the figure skaters kind of tie in that. And they kind of use their club as an inlet for their figure skating club. So we've been having the preschools gone in, once they, so I'm on, and they'll be done this week.
Thank you for that. When we go down the staff budget. Again, Amber, thank you for putting this together, spiritual to have. When we take a look at it, um, staff budget that we have at. Two hundred and ninety two thousand eight hundred is comparable to Casper at two hundred and ninety four thousand eight hundred. And then the lowest on here is a hundred and thirty thousand for Sheridan. And what's. Interesting, and I don't know if there's a way to address it or not, because we're talking about what can we do, are there possibilities that we address things? Because when we look at the staff budget versus income revenue coming in. Sheridan that has the lowest staff budget is bringing in the second highest revenue. Our revenue is at forty thousand per year and the next closest would be um, Gillette at two hundred and sixty. Hundred thousand dollars. And I recognize that it's a not-for-profit business, I do know that. Uh, but at the same time, we're trying to look at ways to mitigate the expense on this.
I think uh, like, I just uh, I think the biggest issue there is, you know, population is probably a big part of that. Um, and these ice rinks have the same equipment, you know, they all have the same, they got their ice resurficers and. All the same thing still has to be done in the rink that you would have to do in a place that's highly populated, that can get more people in. Um, I have tasked Grant with um, giving some ideas on more utilization, um, uh, and. So there's been things that have been tried in the rink to get more people in there. And I was, you know, just kind of thinking about all these different things like indoor soccer, for instance, in summertime, they had indoor soccer in there and it was a big hit for a while. And, but everything we did would just fade off and people just stopped coming, you know, they just fit in more digitally more. It just seemed like they would just lose an interest. And I, my thought was is, part of the problem is that we're trying to do these things that we do regular every week or whatever it is, and they lose interest. So I thought it would be better if we uh, do annual events um, as opposed to regular. So maybe one that's a regular, keep trying that until something grabs a hold, but. Um, so I tasked him with doing a, I don't know if you guys have put it on there, but you know, like the NHL, at the beginning of the season, they do a skills event. Where everybody comes and they participate in, you know, races, see who's the fastest skater is, shot skills, stick handling skills. And I don't, I'm not aware of anybody that's doing that in the state, so I thought if we did something like that, and we'd be the only one who can invite everybody from all over the state. I'm sure uh, people would be very interested in coming and trying to beat everybody else, see who the fastest skater is in all state. Um, and then we would have prizes um, for the events. Um, we would, we picked each groups that we would like to have participate and um. Jessica had the idea that some of that prizes could, because I was thinking my gift cards, you want to make it for a while, because for the five game entry fee. And um, we could maybe use the lodging tax to, as, as a possibility for prizes. And uh, and obviously the first year you do it, maybe it won't be huge. But if we did it every single year and turned it into this big annual within the beginning of the season, I think it could be something really fun. Those, those skills have been, are a blast, you know, the kids usually dress up, they don't, you know, they kind of show off. Uh, that was one of the ideas, and then I also tasked him with trying to get one of this, you know, because he has a lot of contacts in the hockey world to get. At least to have a junior team come play a game here every year, you know? Um, but I, I feel like that, one, it would show. You guys and everybody else, how many people you've been coming to those junior games and how. How much utilization you could get if we had a junior team here. Or maybe we just have someone come play a game, whether it be a preseason or scrimmage or something. And get people over there to watch, uh, that would also build the hockey program. Because I think people would come watch, they're knowing we have kids in hockey and they might want to get their kids in hockey after seeing those games. A very high skill and uh, patch impact. Um, that was one of the other things I tasked them trying to get done. And um, and then I had uh, he got, let us, why don't you tell them about the ice box again, because it seems pretty.
Yeah, there's a game called Ice Bachi. Basically, it's curling, I have bocce ball, shuffleboard, same on the ice. But it's a family event and I purchased three sets of those. They're like, they're six hundred dollars flat, but you can have three games going. And I'm going to utilize it some of the afternoons. So I, being going into families into play, uh, it's actually really fun, we would like that's an analogy, which is. With the basket, things like that, but I know a little over and I have a follower, that's where the guy. The company's from, he's got a whole league where they buy like three hours of ice time and do it. And then I've been working with Meister and I know during their winter carnival to have like a ice bocce, bocce ball tournament. Also that weekend to like help get out to the community that anybody and everybody of a age who's conflicted.
Excellent, essentially. And that's the purpose of doing this and going through, taking a look at expenses. Taking a look at the different programs and frameworks and like these, what can we do to. Minimize some of the expenses and how can we enhance utilization of the facility itself? It's not that we're doing anything wrong, again, I stress that, Andre, it's what can we do to change the path a little bit? To make it so it's more uh, it's familiar for people to use and we can pull different events in there. That, that's all this is about, in my mind. Um, and then the last item on here, again, shows the different uh, revenue sources that the different. Facility uses and he's already gone through that. And that's pretty much what, what we're doing. It's just not a performance review at all on brand or Andre, it's about what can we address when we're in a downturn on our budget? And it's going to be the same for all different departments, it's just not you and then we're going to stop doing it. Listeners, do you have any questions?
I'm good.
You know, but I would like to make one comment to follow, it's what Andre said, I think. Most of these cities that we see here are significantly higher in population than many of them. And so when you spread out the options that people have for their recreation. The more, the better in this case, and so, you know, unfortunately, I think. We offer a lot in this community and few folks have taken advantage of each individual. Opportunity takes away from just one specific thing, it's the ice arena. Uh, when I, can I look down here and look at the big numbers for revenue? It, in my mind at least, it all reflect based on population or a lot of it done based on population. And so, you know, perhaps. Perhaps what we should be doing is comparing, if we're going to compare, is like-sized venues. Or towns that have facilities like this to get a better comparison. Maybe this is, some of this, not all, but some is uh. Kind of an apple oranges thing. And so, you know, we're done. We've got first-class facilities, there's no doubt about that, I've heard, and I'm not a hockey guy. I could stand up on a pair of skates, must have got two, two run-ins on my year then. But I've heard folks that come here and just say, wow, you guys have one of the best facilities in, in whole state. And so what we've got is, is the, in my opinion at least, is the diamond in the rough, we just need to have it make it shine a little bit. And I think some of the stuff that both these guys have suggested may be, I mean, national smart. To see what happens, because you never know until you try. So that's my take on it. Uh. Yeah, I think the numbers can be a little bit deceiving. Uh, and it does cost a lot to keep these facilities operational, that'll get it. So. I, I think, I, I think the thing, in my mind at least, is to figure out how to have some unique. Things going on there that brings somebody to draw their attention to them, saying, hey, let's go try this. But, you know, that's, and that's easier said than done, I do realize that also.
I think keeping the interest of the difficult can do, you have to keep the interest.
Yeah. Yes, anyway, that's my, that's my comment. I do believe we've got a. I do believe we've got a, you know, a good staff and a good leadership there. And then through there a couple of different times. And I see stuff going on that, you know, normally you might not as far as maintenance and keeping that facility and rightfully so. So anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Very much, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Vickery.
I, I think Doug's getting at everything I'm going to say, but these are our kind of apples or oranges in my mind. We're never going to have the population to come through that door that, that you'd like. I would question maybe in the summertime whether we have ice going forward. There might be some other avenues to draw people in, different, different ideas that you guys are kicking around that don't require the ice. But I definitely like your idea of offering something in the springtime for everybody to come to and lean heavily on the heater and that lodging tax, because I, you know, if you get money added, we're going to have more participation and it'll, it'll help the entire town. It's, I don't want to see this thing get so expensive that we can't use it because there's a lot of those venues that you start judging them by revenue and pretty quick and where you can use them. I, I have only been in there one time, but I really liked what I saw in there. Proud ownership there.
Thank you for that. Any other statements, thoughts? Good job. Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, as, you know, in, when I put together this and reached out to all the ice rinks around the state, I think it's
For those online, this is Amber with PAC addressing this. Thank you.
I think it's really important to note that you are correct in that the revenue source is never going to be equitable to the other cities around the states. Mostly because our ice time is really affordable. So I can't, I can't think off the top of my head, but it's fifteen or twenty bucks an hour that the Hockey Association and the bigger skating use, I'm paid to use the ice, where every other ice club in the state is paying upwards of hundred twenty, hundred fifty or more per hour to be able to use their ice time. And then that's passed on to the users. So for the Pine Dell Hockey Association, our registration fees are a quarter or a fifth of what our counterparts are just down Rock Springs or even over in Riverton, where Riverton doesn't have an ice rink. They have an outdoor rink. Then it's only available and it's very cool. So, so I don't think, those are things that the other facilities obviously are passing on to the user groups in the community to help build that revenue. And I know that's something that was expressed as being very important locally of making known that ice time remain affordable. So I just wanted to add that piece of, it's a pretty awesome privilege we have here of having such affordable ice time. But with that, then there's an additional subsidy that comes into it from the commissioners. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Grand, Andre, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Of next goes Chad Gobert.
Forty pressures. Everybody here, okay? Good. I don't have anything particular today, just my, my regular monthly fire warning report. So I'll run you everybody through that. So we're a little ahead on our, on our budget right now. That's just a reflection of the invoice that we received to pay for the chassis delivery of the fire truck. That'll even itself out here within the next couple of months. And I expect to be right on track for the expenditure at this time of year. As far as incidents go, we had thirty-nine calls in the month of September. There's a breakdown, fourteen Pine Dell, seven Big Pine, two Montra, five Boulder, seven Daniel, two in Kennebally, and then two on emergency calls for, oh, it's four, four smoke detectors. There are no open investigations in Sublet County at this time. Everything's been closed. Fire prevention, really October's fire prevention month. That's where we put all of our efforts. This is a month of September, so not a lot of activity in, in September. As I mentioned, we, we brought on the new Firewise Program Coordinator, while in every interview coordinator, Josie Valet. She's been extremely busy, absolutely hit the ground running. She's done multiple site business, multiple community meetings and meetings with large ranch owners and is currently assessing grant opportunities to provide assistance for homeowners to reduce hazard scale around their homes. No smoke sensor installations in, in September. Training programs going very, very strong. Administered numerous tests. I won't go into deep details there. But firefighters are continuing to increase their education qualifications and experience, which enhances our ability to respond to emergencies and provide calm, moderate pictures for all of our firefighters. Yeah, training programs have been, been going very, very strongly. My little, make note the retreat academy number twelve. It is, it's getting ready to kick off in January. Justin Hill and our training officer have been working very hard to put together the, the calendar for that, for the, the current recruits that are planning to enroll in that, into that, again, in January. But yeah, it's been, been doing a great job just all together and meeting these, the, 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 the recruits. And as far as the cooperative service meetings, it's a big part of my job for establishing and maintaining partnerships with our local state level partners. Volunteer hours, it, it says zero in September, but that just means it's, it's the day I'm going to launch because I've turned in hours. And I might start with that, or get caught up. That month, I think, I've been a bunch of hours in the launch. That's all I have for the report.
Um, Commissioner, I do have observations I made in the cover sixteen, so I've drawn that. I'm going to get published sort of a small quarter page or a big, big page display showing, highlighting Sublet County Unified Fire. And that it just illustrates the actions that we give you to add and how the public service supports our county Unified Fire. So good view and they'll be doing that for other agencies and groups throughout the year. And that was offered at no cost. Good job. Thank you. Any questions for Chad, please?
Yeah, I have a, I'm very late in the moment. What's the cascade here? Thank you. Sorry. I just don't know what to ask.
Commissioner Bernard, in response to Commissioner Vickery's question, what we have is, is our SCBA is the self-contained breathing apparatus, the, the bottle where the firefighters breathe when they go into burning buildings. We have large tanks that are cascaded, meaning they're connected to each other in series. Those large tanks are, are at each of the fire stations and that's what we use to, to refill the SCBAs. They're actually carrying in the, that leads to firefighters. So we have a mobile air trailer stationed at, at the Daniel Fire Station. And our training officer went around to the outlying stations and refilled the, the air systems in those cascade tanks.
Thank you for that. I do know that. And I have one other, one other question. As I drive around county, I see, I know this has to be a concern. I see a lot of homeowners with their firewood stacked there. That might take a time to get in their homes. So can't think that's a good thing. And so how do you address that or can?
Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Vickery, I know it's a great question and, and no, the national best practices and all the public education and with some brochures and everything that we hand out for public education specifically addresses that and recommends homeowners to stack their firewood away from their home, the, the general practice is at least thirty feet away from their home. And the reason why is because if, if during a wildland fire, like the Dollar Lake fire recently, if the, if a fire is, is lofting embers into the, into the air, when those embers come down, they land in a receptive fuel bed, they're very likely to ignite a new fire. Well, a, a stacked firewood is a very receptive fuel bed. It's been cured and dried and ready to burn. If the receptive fuel bed, the fire, the firewood pile is right adjacent to your home, then the firewood pile will be the intermediary fuel that burns your home down. See it over and over again in large wildland fires. So yeah, the, the recommendation for public education is to always stack your firewood pile away from the homes. Unfortunately, that's, that's an inconvenience for homeowners and, you know, the, you know, it's, it's also, you know, you know, many of us have wood burning stoves in our homes. It's a lot, it's a lot easier to go down to the porch and grab the, grab the firewood than than bringing it in the house than it is to walk thirty foot away from the home. So what we, what we begin recommending this is during the winter months, when you're using a wood burning stove, maybe that's an appropriate time to have a small pile on your porch. But for the remainder of the year, keep the large pile away from the, from the home. And even, even better yet, if you are going to have a large pile, make sure to protect it and some sort of a, a covering.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Any further questions, comments? Chad, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Vickery.
Uh, that's Pine Dell Roundup, State of the County Magazine. I know we're on the side here, but we can have a
They're online.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm just, would you ask Rob if he would like his camera on or just his mic unmuted? Okay. And let him know that his, Rob, you're, you're unmuted. You just need to unmute yourself.
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you for that. This is who, please?
Rob Hicks.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, good morning. We have been talking about the State of the County Magazine with you. And you've offered us a proposal in that regard. Are there other items since sending out that proposal that you wanted to address? Or are you pretty good at where you're at?
I'm fine with where I'm at. I wanted to come and attend this meeting virtually. If you all had questions that, that you had regarding this project and to be able to provide any answers for those questions so that you could take action as quickly as you deemed necessary.
Great. Thank you for that, Rob. Appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for any of the, some of the State of the County Magazine?
Mr. Chairman. I think my question was, which newspapers will get the inserts? I mean, what towns and?
We, we planned on the, this solely going into the Pine Dell Roundup as this is a Sublet County project. And that is the, the thousand is the circulation of the Pine Dell Roundup. Then we planned another five hundred to be distributed in high-traffic areas throughout the, throughout the communities within Sublet County, gas stations, things of that nature, so that people could pick those up as we're delivering papers for, for over-the-counter sales that we would get, get papers to those, or get these publications to those sites as well.
So like if somebody's wintering in Arizona and they've changed their subscription there, they'll get one with the insert?
They will get one with an insert, yes.
All right. Thanks.
Rob, I did have a correspondence from Third District Court, Dan Montgomery. And she raised some excellent questions that we don't know what we don't know, I guess is the best way to put it. And I'll just run through this quickly, food for thought, and then forward this to you. And I don't think it has anything to do with making, back commitment to the State of the County Magazine. It is kind of, well, it's directed towards what is the makeup of the magazine and what are the thoughts in regards to this? Is it, it comes and asks the county, are we only providing budget information? And is there a plan to gather information that is not readily available on the county website? Did the county have a say in what photos that would be chosen for the cover? Will the publication also include graphs and charts along with photos? Will the commissioners do a letter to the community as part of that? In case that, divide photos into commissioners that will enhance our appearance. Photos of the previous State of the County reports are part of a pre-publication. Getting new photos. And then I think this is a ballad, Rob. Two drafts, an initial draft to ask questions, provide additional information in a final draft for proofreading prior to going to press. And I think these are all standard or they're not, Rob, as far as putting together something of this quality?
They're absolutely standard. I can address most of those right now. The commission will have complete creative control over what goes into this publication. What information you want in it, we will make sure that it goes into it. There will be graphs where appropriate, if the commissioners have specific things that they would like to have graphs based on prior publication. I, I based this, this bid on including all information that had been provided in prior publications. And so if the commissioners would like additional information that was not provided in that, in, in those prior publications, please let us know and we will make sure that that information is included. That if there are specific items of information that you all would like to make, have made into graphs, we can accomplish all of this. This is, this is a joint project that you all have complete control over. I will provide a list of, of all of the things that have been included in prior publications. And if you guys wanted to go through that and quickly decide, well, we, we, we really like all of this information, but we want one other thing or two other things. We can include that in there. We would ask that if, if information is not readily available on the website, that you direct your department heads to, please be cooperative with providing that information to our point person on this. I, I, I would presume as well organized as Sublet County is that ninety percent of this information is already on, on the site. You will have complete creative control. We will provide probably not hundreds of photos for you to choose from for a cover photo, but four or five photos to, to choose from on a cover photo so that you guys can choose that as well. You can have as much creative or as little creative control as you want on this.
I appreciate your explanation and willingness to work with us, Rob. Thank you so very much. Commissioners, any personal comments?
I did forget to address one item that you brought up about additional copies. As I indicated, with a, with a press run this small, it's, it, to add a hundred or two hundred copies is not going to be an, an issue. So if you want an extra couple hundred copies to be able to go to your departments, we can do that for the same price because there's going to be firing up the press and running a, a press run this size, there's going to be quite a bit of waste. And we'll absorb the cost of, of, of getting the two to three hundred additional copies.
I appreciate that. Thank you so very much, Rob. Commissioners, we have, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Rob. We have a proposal for fifteen hundred State of the County reports, a thousand copies to be inserted in the Pine Dell Roundup. And then five hundred copies will be distributed by the Roundup staff at key locations across Sublet County. Total cost for this project is eleven thousand fifty dollars, includes editorial co-ord- Total cost for this project is eleven thousand fifty dollars, includes editorial coordination, locally-produced biography, design, printing, and distribution. Do you have any questions pertaining to this proposal in the vote, Commissioners? Is there anyone that wants to take an action on this topic?
Or will this funding come out of budget?
Do we have something within the Commissioner's side for this, do the county tell us?
If you can give me just a minute, I will ask Haley or Elizabeth to look in the printing and publication where we paid that last time and see if it was budgeted for in fiscal year twenty six. I apologize that I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out real quick.
If not, we would have been budgeted for twenty five?
Yes, it was, but that doesn't roll over. It just.
It's close enough to ten thirty, which might take a short reset. That's information being logged up. Ten minutes.
Ten-minute break.
You don't need one today, is that?
Always, thank you.
We'll take a fifteen-minute reset. Thank you. Jim Mitchell, Emergencies and Management, update, please.
We want to make a move on this Pine Dale.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for that.
Do you like?
No. I would like to do, go back to the original reason we went on break was the discussion of pulling the funds out of what portion of a budget. And these commissioners have a line item, eighty-five thousand dollars in their budget for consultants and will pull it from that portion of the of our budget. And with that being said, we'll go back to the motion at hand. Or if there is a motion that needs to be made. Again, fifteen hundred copies of these State of the County reports, thousand copies in the Roundup, five hundred for distribution with the availability of some more being printed by the Roundup for cost of eleven thousand fifty dollars exclusive of any additional spending.
I'd make motion to enter contract with Pine Dale Roundup to produce a State of the County report as presented, eleven thousand fifty dollars paid for out of the consultation line item.
A motion by Commissioner Bradley. Your second?
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion on the line item for the State of the County publication?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. Now, where it says, where it says a thousand copies will be inserted into the Pine Dale Roundup. Is that in, like, there's venues in Pine Dale and having Roundup, does that mean those copies will be against those also? Or is it just in the open shoe?
Rob, we have a question pertaining to the insertion of the State of the County publication, if you're still with us.
Yes, I am. That will go into every copy of the Roundup, whether that is mailed in county, out of county, or on the stands. There will be five hundred additional outside of Roundup that we will distribute and we will get you all an additional three hundred copies to for you all to decide how that, how you want to distribute that within your departments.
So in the newspaper stand itself, will those newspapers also include a State of the County report? I missed what you said on that, Rob. I'm sorry.
Every newspaper will have it.
Great, I appreciate that.
Additionally, additionally, we will include the the E-edition, the electronic edition for free on our website. And and of course, we will provide access to those files so that the county can provide that electronic edition on the Sublet County website.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Vickery, did I ask you a question? With that being said, there's no modifications on anything. But motion in the second, all in favor, signify? Opposed? Motion to have for the publication Pine Dale Roundup. Rob, thank you for everything. We appreciate your coming into the community and it's up to your taking. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and I will get that list of items to you shortly regarding what what we see as in the in in this publication. And if you have things that you would like to add, please let us know.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate everything.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks for attending. Up next, Jim Mitchell, this night for real.
Chairman Bernard. Commissioner Stata. Thank for the time to speak today. I had a kind of a presentation planned this morning, but we're having a little technical difficulty, so maybe we can present that up later. Would like to talk to you about preparedness real quick. I don't know if you guys or you gentlemen are all fine there before our mass notification system. This kind of helps with that. Get you signed up. There's a QR code that you can do it right on your telephone. We asked that the public lives and resides here, even summer homes owners, we asked that they come in and sign up for this so that if something happens on their property, we need to notify this mass notification system. Finds you. So you don't have to find the incident, it finds you. So if you sign up, which takes just a little bit, about ten minutes, once you sign up, then we draw locks, set off the messaging. And wherever you're at in the nation, as long as you've got cell phone service, it'll come like, let's know that there's a problem. So that's a little bit different than what we experienced this summer with Pocket Creek Fire in Dollar Lake. When your, everybody's phone went off. That's an integrated public alert warning system. And that's where we have a box, most times the county or a smaller geographical box, where it will set that up. And as you enter the box or an affiliate with a cell phone tower. When your cell phone pushes to that tower, it will give you that message. So we used to set those for four hours, but we found that was a little long. This time to dumb that down to about an hour. Once you drive into the box, it gives you that message and dumps it down. If anybody's been standing in in release when the amber alerts have gone off, it's kind of neat to see everybody's phone go off. That know that we have that ability to help with that. So that's our mass notification system. Again, that's a signup thing. And then these are two weeks ready and what we kind of think about now. I don't know about you gentlemen, but I've lived in Wyoming and had winter weather and had roads closed and not having milk and and bread on the on the in the aisles of the store. So this is kind of a national standard now that we need to be two weeks ready. The having it probably wouldn't be fun, but I know I can do it in in my wife and I have set up to have enough food to go at least two weeks. Here's ready meal, we're able to cook on our gas stove without any power, so we can have the ability to cook meals and go through what's left in the freezer. I I look at this as kind of just a standard that we all do. Well, we've all had that that time where it's tough to get to the store or get into town or busy dealing with any any emergency locally to where you live. So we we look at this two weeks ready as the as the standard. It used to be seventy-two hours, have a seventy-two hour plan. But we need to be ready for two hours, two two weeks because we don't know where, when the health's coming. We need to be able to help ourselves. That kind of goes with the presentation that I was going to do. And then the quick update, we completed the threat hazard incident risk assessment that's due every year. That is, we helped with Ira. Public Health and I both work on that together and it's a it's it's a big monster spreadsheet that helps us look at hypothetically where we might have a gap and be able to address those gaps through funding or training. So we have an avalanche, we have a cyber attack, and we have some natural disaster, tornado or earthquake, and we work through those scenarios and then try to try to see what we would need to make sure that we're able to house people if they need housing. Make sure that they get, we can shelter. How we're going to work with other counties on as an incident full resource to them. So that that's a big document that we just completely sent to the state. And then still have a grant pending with Billy Pagan through the state to work on that auxiliary entrance egress into the rodeo grounds in Pine Dale so that when we're if we would have an emergency there, we'd be able to get emergency services in and out through the CB land stuff. And I haven't heard anything and I haven't been able to get anything back, but I think the answer is going to be when I when I call state, they're going to tell me that the government shut down and they don't know where the staff said that is. So we're still working on that. But those are the two biggies that we've been able to complete so far. So that's what's going on. Mr. Matt? Don't want any questions?
So, thank you for that presentation. Really appreciate it. When we think, look at what's occurring across the nation with a lot of the different communities and how nothing is settled with law enforcement, unfortunately, because the makeup of the politics and communities were very fortunate and blessed here. But what happens if something occurs? Let's say there's an EMP or there's things fall apart. How are we setting to be able to address any conflicts or make sure that everyone is relatively fit within our community? Does that make sense?
With the technology, anything older than a to an EMP specifically, sharing the mid-eighties vehicle, if it's if it's older or older than a mid-eighties vehicle, they're not going to be too affected, but anything newer than that is going to affect. All my vehicles are newer than that, and if they weren't shielded, we would have problems with transportation response for everybody. So that's that's a big one. And to be able to prepare for that, other than living in a concrete bunker underground or be able to store vehicles and that, I don't know how we would address that. But we would work with our surrounding counties and the entities within Sublet County to make sure that we could make sure that the the people are taken care of.
And that's a question when you say what's wrong in counties because everyone's going to be impacted the same as far as lack of communication or mobility. And these are the things that are concerned the people, of course, and how do we know?
I understand that, but with a very, very big consequences to that scenario, but not a lot of solutions to fix that. So it's not something that I've looked into to setting a plan for. So that to answer your question specifically, I don't know how it worked until it'd be the day out. And we make we make it work. So make sure that life safety and people are taken care of. People with bad electricity and medically dependent people were taken care of first and those access and function needs people and and work through the work through the problems. We've got a very good team here and collaborate with what's going on with you gentlemen and our emergency services that we have in Sublet County. Very self-reliant and not an EMP, but we broke the main shaft in the brand-new sandbag machine in eleven when I started work here. And they were able to machine a new shaft so that we could use the, machine it here at Royal Bridge so that we could use the the sandbag machine. So very resilient and very, very team-oriented.
Thank you for that. Commissioners, questions?
I don't.
Mr. Chairman, please. Jim, can you give us a bridge version of? It's a good reminder, I think it's a good reminder from everybody else, how your position came into existence and then the partnerships that we have funding your positions. Is the branch bridge version?
I have many predecessors in Sublet County. The most recent one was Bob Hanson before I came here. I came to work for after vacancy with Bob. I came and worked with Dave Leifert and started in May of eleven. On the liaison between how we can work through incidents and funding and grants from Sublet County to State of Wyoming through Homeland Security, Wyoming National Homeland Security, and then up to FEMA. By the division of the Sheriff's Office, worked for easily. And very, very thankful for that. It's a very good working relationship and help to keep everyone, so fire, EMS, Public Health, the airports, yes, will help that bridge to so that everybody's completing their mission if there's an incident. So what can I bring to the table? I can give that certification. I can bring your command vehicle. I can show you where we can step next to see about grant funding through the state and federal agencies. That's all that, all that mixed together and work on planning so that we've got an emergency operation. So that's kind of in a nutshell. That's the very bridge, very bridge version, Sam.
Excuse me, what's your way?
I need to work with the oil and gas. Yes, sir. You and I have worked closely together in our career since I've been here. I didn't know you before I got here, but being a production specialist and working with you and Kevin now together, the bring that bridge that if you've got a problem, what can I help you with to lessen that so that you can take some of that off your shoulders so that we can close the incident as soon as we can? That's been a big thing with relationships. And sometimes it's hard with the transition that that's been recently, seems like it's happening more and more. It's hard to keep up with the hats as they as they come through. So just found out another NPL has broken out of NPLX and Harvest or Sparkers took over that. So, yes, it's hard to make those. Went up and saw Ben Gardner from ExxonMobil yesterday doing an energy tour with some new positions at the Sheriff's Office. My job to show a new dispatcher and a new deputy every time that they, when they first come in through their field training to take them out, we do a hundred-and-eighty-mile loop. We were at Black Canyon yesterday and talked to Ben Carter at ExxonMobil and looks like Deadberry's going to get a good kick in the pants at surface to work on seeing what they can do to produce out of there. So on the right of the ridge plant. So that was good news that, you know, just being out and and having them face that. It kind of helps that Ben lives down the block from me in town and drives every day to Black Canyon that I already knew him, but to pull over and stop and we talked for one minute. So it worked out really well. Making those, making those building those relationships so that you know that I can bring something to you. I can give you radio prompts. I can help you interface with emergency services. I can just make the incident shorter and and get, so we can get done with it. Well, thanks, Jim. Thank you. Anything else, your way?
Mr. Bernard. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Can it pan out, please? This is a new update.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm here for, open for a lot of questions, but to start off, I just wanted to thank you guys. It's a community program. And it's reported as sheriff, the Department of the Sheriff's Department Um, or I should say an arm like the sheriff's department. And for finishing up another great year, um, I know last. Meeting, you guys had some questions, I think, on SARS behalf, so I wanted to be able to answer those too. So. I'm ready to start with an overview, a kind of a, a twenty-five at a glance, or I can start with answering the questions.
Mr. President, question pertaining to search investor last meeting.
Well, I think we'd like to just start with four or something.
That's okay. You don't have to educate any of the public that's listening or review is great.
Yeah, well, I, I think the, I, I think. Part of the concern with speaking accounts table, well, within the recent items. That's where the thing they want to. Where the contract is X and then. The, the training programs, the cost associated with that come out of that whole contract exactly, or is it an additional too? I think that's the only thing that's confusing for me, you know, so.
Sure, you bet. And, you know, working forward, if there's a easier way of doing it, but the way we kind of do our checks and balances right now. Is, and you're, you're talking about the helicopter contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah, which is one avenue of the search and rescue. It's one of our tools on our toolbox essentially. Um, we do have a line item for this seasonal contract for the helicopter. And that's essentially for the um, exclusive use of this helicopter. We have, uh, we're actually ending our five-year contract. Um, at the end of October. And that is essentially the lease of the helicopter, the use of the pilots, and use of the program. Now, in addition. I have training costs that accrue throughout the year. Um, this is by far one of the highest. Risk skills that he asks of our volunteers. And so there is a lot of training um. On our part to make sure our team is on top of their game. This is by far the lowest frequency, highest risk skill that we ask of our team. And on behalf of SAR. So we need to spend a lot of hours making sure we're ready to go. We also have to adhere to some national standards to do that. And so you'll see us training multiple times a month, and that comes out of my training budget. Um, and that's to keep my team on top of their game. We adhere to not only the Department of Interior, but also the National Park Service protocols. And with those, and having an exclusive use of this medium-duty helicopter that we do, you know, our pilots have to be in the air every twenty-eight days. Our team has to be trimmed every ninety days. Um, by far, we're above those, those minimum standards. But there's probably every pilot I've spoken to that have worked with us or have come to work fires and just had a conversation. The Winger River Mountain Range is one of the most difficult ranges for them to work in northern, in the lower forty. Alaska would be the little ballgame in Europe. It's, it's in a world of itself as far as I wish. Uh, the wind and the altitude and the temperatures have created such chaos that it really takes a special pilot. And so we, we pride ourselves in making sure that we maintain. You know, a good program and a safe program. So you'll see the, the training costs for that. And there's, there is separate for SAR operations. And you'll see those every month. And those, those are one part of my budget that is, has the potential of being reimbursed. And that's through the state SAR funds. They have a fund set up. That solely is dependent on the two-dollar donations for hunting and fishing license and off-road permit. The voluntary two dollars gets put into a kitty that goes to the state SAR council and homeland security. Then. We, me as the SAR manager in each county is able to attend a reimbursement meeting, and we present our year's worth of expenses that are just accrued during the actual SAR operation. And then the state SAR council discusses on being able to reimburse those funds. We were very fortunate as of today, they have never denied any request we had for reimbursement of each SAR operation. And that, that goes from everything from fuel to replacing clothing, maybe got destroyed, um, you know, meals. Ever, anything that would happen within the open and closed time frame of each operation. So you will see different line items when I send in a voucher each month, and that is to pay for the lease, pay for training, and to pay for uh, SAR operations. That help?
Yeah, yes, it did. So I'm going to follow on. So I don't remember what it was like pricing, but it looked like we paid for a helicopter pilot to get his certification. And I would have keep, this is me, I would have guessed that would have been, should have been, in my mind, which. Part of. Their requirements, their company requirements, to make sure that person is certified, not ours, it's a commission. Security certainly. So.
Correct.
So explain how that would be.
Sure, you bet, Commissioner, um, and, and Chair, or Commissioner Victory. Um, that is always happened at the very beginning of the year. It's actually probably the first day, if not the first two days. And what we have taken upon ourselves as Sublet County to do was we bring in a third party. Because there is with these national um, of the Department of Interior standards to go by, there is a, a certification process. That each pilot has to go through, and it's a series of four different stages. And it's, it's showing their control. Of having the line under and being taken care of. So going through those four phases, we brought in a third party. His name is Tim Fowler, that we've used for several years now. Who is a former Sea Wolf. He was a Huey pilot. In, in NAM, um, and he has a business that he comes and does essentially these check rides to make sure that they're able to pass those standards. We could do it internally, but we want to make sure that. We have an objective view. So we bring in this third party, I mean, check. Specialist to check to make sure that they are meeting standards. Sometimes it's been very questionable. They only get, pilots get three attempts. And if they fail those three attempts, it doesn't matter if they've, are a veteran of shore hauling, people are longlining and, you know, outside of SAR contract. If they're not able to pass these, then they are not eligible to work for us for the summer. And sometimes it gets a little questionable because it's all about time. They have to do things within a time limit. And um, we never wanted to have that liability of, well, they were close and we really liked this guy, so we're going to give her another chance. We wanted to keep it very above the border, you know, in one. So that is the first day, um, and we have. In the past, we've always just been able to bring that through person. Those are the costs.
Do you ever fail people in that regard?
Pardon?
Do you ever fail people in that?
Yes, we have had two pilots over the years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's nice to know it's not automatic.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, you know, again, you've got these veteran pilots, you know, we had a couple Vietnam pilots that have been doing this for, you know, a long time. And um, get so nervous for this every year. And then this is not a specialty for us. They do this if they were going to take any national contract. If they're going to take a national forest or be in a national park. Um, they would, they do the exact same exam. So they do this every year, and they get so stressed. Every year. This is changing.
Thank you.
Sure. If I can continue with the helicopters, since that's kind of been the hot topic, um, we are kind of, we're at the five-year of our prior contract with rugged mountain aviation. I'm Kirk Kelsey. Um, the last couple of years, we've had himself and Emmett Webb as chief pilot. And I don't think there's a program out there that could be even more blessed than we are to have the caliber and the safety and the knowledge that, that these two gentlemen have provided. And they just swap, you know, the two weeks at a time, um, to have continued service for us. We need to consider what our future is with this. Um, they have provided above and beyond um, the, the ship, the capability. At a price range that I think is. Way below what we would be paying for any other helicopter. Um, because it is a Huey, it's not a Cadillac of the new A stars like Teton has or an Airbus. And there's a lot prettier ships out there. But ours is a workhorse. Um, I was fortunate two weeks ago to attend the International Congress about pine rescue for a week. They had four of the best helicopters for rescue uh, there for a show and tell. The newest one is a nine-million-dollar machine that honestly has some auto capabilities, so it can do some autoply and auto hovering, which scares me so bad. Two helicopters like a bubby, they shouldn't fly. And so now to know that there's those capabilities, wild. He gave us the parameters of what his payload would be, and that's what's important for us is. How, you know, how well is it going to work at a certain elevation, at a certain temperature? And, and how much weight can it hold? That includes the fuel and that includes the people, whether we're transporting people in or out, or we're doing shore haul, shore haul mission. Excuse me. With the parameters that set, that he said was zero Celsius, fourteen thousand feet. Um. With an hour and a half of fuel. He told me what his payload could be. So I sent those numbers really quick to Kirk Kelsey and said, how does that compare to what our machine can do? Over twice. More than twice the payload our good old Huey can, can, can provide for us. So that guarantees that our missions are shorter. Because we can carry enough fuel to just do one in and one out. It was interesting looking at statistics the last couple of days. When we started leasing a helicopter for Sublet County in two thousand and eleven, we had a hundred and nine hours of flight time. And that's just the time that they're in the air, not the time that they're sitting waiting for us. Um, and as of right this year, we have twenty-eight point two. Excuse me, fifty-five point two with all the trains and everything included. So why the drastic difference when we have a lot more people visiting and having issues than back in the day? Well, it was because a helicopter would have to take two or three trips to get one mission done, um, because we could carry such little payload. Um, we were asking people literally empty their pockets, and do you really need that in your pack? And making things as lean as we could weight-wise. And they could carry such little fuel that it would take a long time to get several people in there. Do a job, get everybody back out. And now it's kind of a one-and-done. Um, our average flight time now is one point four hours. For a mission that obviously by ground, if we did not have this air asset, um, would be a three-day um, mission if we had to haul our equipment in by ground or by horse. Um, to the expense, you know, of this, you know, massive as the winds are, it's really made a difference. So. I'm very proud to be a part of this program, and I would really hope you guys would consider letting us extending or, or entering a new contract with these same individuals. Um, Sheriff Blair and I met with Kirk Kelsey last week, and it sounds like he's willing to keep price range just absolutely same. The only thing that obviously is kind of up in the air, and that's the fuel costs. And that could go up to ten percent. Um, but he obviously wants to wait to see how you guys want to go forward with the helicopter. And then we can talk with, uh, banking and start opening a contract if that's. Reconciling for you guys.
All right, Mr. Chairman. So uh. Teton County, do they go out of their county and help people, or are they restricted just to their county with their own helicopter?
Also. One of the caveats with them buying that helicopter, because they've always worked jointly with Grand Teton National Park as far as kind of helping each other out. Um, in the past, we've always had a helicopter in the summer seasons. Teton always needed the helicopter in the winter seasons. That's when they needed access to the backcountry for the skiers the most. And so it worked out great where the park helicopter, the Grand Teton National Park helicopter. Would be busy during the summer and not as busy in the winter, so they would help Teton County. Now that Teton's bought their own. They're able to now reciprocate and help Grand Teton Park out because Grand Teton Park is, has lost one of their helicopters. They need to get elsewhere to a different national park. Um, and they, like, we had a big incident over in Big Horn County, gentleman was lost for several weeks. Um, had taken a big fall, but they were over there helping. So we do have the capability of renting them. Uh, when you look at costs. Uh. Our helicopter, our hourly fee versus our operations is twenty-seven fifty an hour. Um, as an equivalent, Teton County's is four thousand an hour. Um, and then we would be kind of a third on the list as far as availability. And that's if they have a mission going, the Teton Park has a mission going, and then the availability for us. So we have used them before. They helped with the Downs Mountain Rescue, um, last season, uh, uh, high thirteen thousand feet. So there are other capabilities. Um, it's just not having the availability. And um, we would not be able to use our crew. They would come in and do the rescuing.
So do they ever charge these people? Or they got their own now? Do they charge places if they go and help out?
Absolutely. Um, we all pay for the usage, so they charged me for the use of using it, uh, at Downs Mountain Rescue. And that would be no different than when Fremont County calls us to assist them, which we help a lot. Being on the, actually, the whole cirque, the inside of the cirque mountains where all those climbers are, that's all Fremont County. It's more accessible for us to get there and help them. We have the, the means to get there with the helicopter and perform a rescue of somebody's, um, mid-rock. Um, and I have to turn around and charge them. And we've done that a couple of times this year already.
Because they aren't obligated, or are they to pay some of these when we go out of county? I mean, we don't always get paid, do we?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, every, yeah, um.
We've never been denied.
Yeah, as you said, we've never been denied. And I think it's kind of a common, working with, we work with Park County every year. We work with Fremont County. One time we went over, all the way over to Big Horn, definitely kind of out of our element, both Teton and us to go help, um, part of Big Horn, but we have. Um, we've helped Lincoln County a lot, and it's all part of that agreement, and it's known that they will pay the bill. I helped Lincoln County this year. We used the helicopter two point two hours to, they had a repeater, a radio repeater be hit by lightning. And so they needed to get the gentleman up there, and they actually ended up doing one down by Smith Fork, and then went clear up to Bradley, which is almost, you know, snake river area. And we were able to help them do some radio maintenance, and they paid the bill for that. We were, Kirk charged us. And then working with Jessica and Emily, then we were able to send an invoice to Lincoln County, and they paid us back. So as of, as of today, we're paid back for the three times. It's been used out of.
Commissioner Stevens, I want to clarify your question, just to make sure around the, uh, saying the same thing. Are you asking if the person that is rescued, um, is reimbursing, or you're just asking?
We've talked about that before. Sometimes they might. So if we go into Fremont County and rescue somebody, that's on the person we're rescuing, not if Fremont County didn't request it.
No, that, that's not correct. So this is a, uh, this is a statewide public service. Uh, we cannot charge for rescues, um, unless. And it's, and it's, we, uh, as far as I know, it's never been done, uh, unless the individual was reckless, reckless, or there was some, um. Ill intent, uh, to put them in that situation. Um, so as far as I know, the state of Wyoming has never charged an individual, uh, to be rescued, um, in the state of Wyoming.
So we eat that, you're saying?
So we, we, uh, reimbursed by the county through the SAR council with the Office of Homeland Security.
Is there a, a straight pass through on the invoice, or is there a plus for it?
Uh, we, there's no plus for us.
Wouldn't be?
Yeah, no, just in good faith, just whatever pops us. Is that what you mean?
When we receive an invoice from the board, uh. Doing the rescue.
Mm-hmm.
When we go out Fremont County, for example, is that a dollar-to-dollar pass through to them, or is their cost just ten percent or five percent?
No, it's, it's been dotted on.
Okay, thank you.
So with your flight time, twenty-eight hours this year. Uh, obviously, that could change every year, but what do you think if you were just written Teton County at four thousand an hour or whatever? But so far down on list, would you be able to respond to all of those calls that you've had using Teton County's machine?
No, absolutely not. Um, I mean, that's. It's a guess. It's really, that, I can't answer that. We will respond to anything. We definitely set the bar pretty high, having the helicopter, um, getting this fed up, not only are we responding, it has definitely been a lifesaver. Um, this year alone, we had a twenty-seven-year-old having died in a contingency that would not have, um, survived. Had we not been able to get, number one, we were getting there right kind of at twilight anyway. So by the time we would have walked in there, um, I don't think that gentleman survived. So it's been, it's been huge, but. Um, we can hope that Teton's available, but there's no guarantee, and there's, there's no way of guaranteeing that.
So this, this tip we've paid for with Phil or still funding?
So this, this tip we've paid for with PILT or still funding?
Yes, in the past, uh, Commission has used the Title III money, and I know that that is not available this year. Um, I know that PILT is also available for use. Um, I know that you've used PILT for many, many other programs also. So I would ask that you guys would, you know, look at, at, I know this is a tough time to be asking for, for funding, but we want to make sure that this program continues. I think we've set a really good standard of saving the amount of people. You look at the, the increase in the people, it's just the Wind Rivers alone. Um, this is unofficial results, it's not, this is information that was given to me by Forest Service, that they have not published any official numbers yet. But in seventeen, the summer use of the Wind Rivers was forty five thousand people. In twenty two, in twenty three, it had increased to eighty to ninety, eighty-five to ninety thousand people are injured. So that is post-COVID, that is just everybody wanting to get out. It is the longest stretch of the continental divide. So people can come and do a hundred mile stretch, non-stop, without a year in town. Um, so it's a very, very well used, um, it's the largest stretch of wilderness. Um, and so that, you know, that's no motorized, and so getting, uh, having such a great relationship with the bridge of Teton. And, um, you know, them allowing us to use the helicopter to speed up our responses, um, is, is really helped.
So could this contract be shortened, or are they here basically at the beginning of peak season, or?
Oh, yeah, we got, we talked about some changes. We've been going from June one to October thirty one. Uh, we can change that up. This year, we already discussed of, uh, starting June fifteen. So, cause it all depends on the snowpack, you know, when people start accessing the map. So we started looking at the first day of the contract versus the first day of, of the helicopter rescue. And I think we can definitely get away with cutting it back a couple of weeks, and we can even look at cutting it short at the end of, of the seasonal contract. Right now, it's hunting season. But we normally don't get the calls unless the weather gets bad. And, you know, can we fly the helicopter when the weather gets bad? It's a crap shoot. So we can, we have normally been busy till to the end of the month, but we can easily cut that back to the beginning of October to the middle of October. We started with a ninety day contract. This year's will be a hundred and fifty three. The last three years have been a hundred and fifty two bits. So we should definitely play with those numbers.
And so they get paid the same when they, the year they flew a hundred and nine hours versus twenty eight hours this year. Their contract doesn't vary by flight time?
Yes, oh, totally, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're paid monthly depending on, on the usage.
But is our contract five hundred and some thousand?
Yes, but we don't pay that money, so.
But it, but it, they get it all, or they only get the portion that they're flying?
They only get what, what it's, they only get the, what they should, what they actually charge.
Think, and that contracts, and the contract that they're here, um, ready to, to stand by. Stand by for us, and then additionally, we play, so when, when you go up in the air to monitor, you pay additional cost on it, right? Of which it recoup from the state.
Thank you, thank you. In that, yeah, I can answer that a lot better, sorry, man. That we do have a daily rate that we pay regardless, every day that they sit here. And so the only thing that would save us money there was, you know, to shorten the window.
Five hundred thousand standby time.
So the, the five hundred thousand, I think, was our estimate that we had there. I think the actual contract, if I, like, this was five years ago, right? The actual contract, it listed it out. It's the same thing we do with, um, Rio Verde as far as being our engineer group. Is, hey, you're, you're on the hook to help us. Here's what we pay. We do go do services for us. We pay additional. This is the, the book that they own.
So this year, standby alone, not ever using it, never turning the key on. For a hundred and fifty days, that it's committed to Sublet County, we'll pay four hundred and twenty thousand subsidy. And then all the additional.
Fremont, Lincoln, some of those other counties be interested in each of, like, days or split it?
We have worked on that in the past. Um, the three years that were spent back in, uh, two thousand and ten and eleven. Um, Sheriff Langford at the time, it was really hard to not only get the helicopter here, but to also do it with Fremont County and Teton County. Um, the one caveat we run into is we're asking it for the summer, so we're competing with fire prices. So people charge a lot of money to the Forest Service to fight fires, so we're having to spend the same cost. When Teton County that had fewer hunts in the winter, when they were just doing a yearly lease also, they were still spending less than us. Because, um, the, the charging price was lower, because ships didn't want to just sit in the garage in the winters all winter. So we're fighting against fire.
Well, seems mad. I mean, finding is a pretty good place to base that would serve Lincoln County fair, fast.
Those are talks that we keep going to in the future.
Talking to them, if we could split the hundred days up between the three of us.
Yeah, we, like I said, it's been fifteen years since we've done that, and nobody was interested in spending that kind of money. It's a lot easier for them to not have to do a daily cost bill for us, and they need us.
Two thousand an hour.
And it's for a little history review, the whole purpose of getting a helicopter to permanently be here in the summers was those years previous to two thousand and eleven, we went through twenty one helicopters in one season alone. And where were those helicopters called in from? They were all medical helicopter. So, cause there was no SAR, um, dedicated, um, helicopters at the time. So you were calling every medical agency and seeing if they could break free and come help us. Um, and as, as time has changed, as whether it's the climate change or whatever it is, the more equipment that medical ships are carrying nowadays, they are having a real difficulty getting to the higher elevations. So we have pretty much a common rule with all the medical helicopter, helicopters that we call to assist us, is that you guys aren't going to go above ten thousand eight hundred feet. We're kind of use that as a window. You guys stay there, we'll bring people down to you if necessary, and we'll bring the public down. So, um, that was kind of the, the, the reasoning of getting it. Um, we went from having a different helicopter every year, you know, a contract every year. We're now finishing our second five-year contract, which I think has really improved the whole performance of our program. And that's because you have the same pilots every year. There is such a trust that has to be built between the people at the end of the line, or sitting on the rock, and that helicopter pilot. Um, working on communication and abilities, that it takes half of the summer just to build up that relationship. And so it's been really nice to have the consistency of the same ship that we know. We don't have to relearn a helicopter, who knows capabilities and its limits, and same with pilots.
So what percentage of your volunteers are trained to go on the helicopter?
I have twelve that, um, have taken the extra time to, to step up to that certification. It's essentially a spinoff of our hangar, because, um, not only are you in a harness at the end of a rope, but because of the, the tight quarters and the difficult, the whole reason for the helicopter is a place that we can't land safely. We can land a medical helicopter there, shoot, we drag everybody to there and let them go on the way. Um, but being it mid-wall, being it in tight trees, steep terrain, um, loose rock, whatever the reasoning is, um, the helicopter team has been able to use a rope scales to step into the short haul. So with a forty two member strong base, um, this twelve member is, is pretty unique.
I got this one, well, that has a, uh, so, uh, I'm a year ago, someone's been there, I think, I took the opportunity to take really good look at the ship down here. It seemed to me then, and they're, they're looking for a moment, that that was a Vietnam vintage helicopter. So, which would make it, I mean, old, old, as old as I am. And so the question I would have, at some point in time, I would think, they're going to have to upgrade that thing.
You're right.
And, I mean, things do wear, I think, basically. And so we're not a cruise, or if a cruise, would you understand the book in effect saying, wow, we've got this newer version? And now it's going to cost it, it's more to have a station here?
Um, very good questions. And the way I can address that, Commissioner Vickery, is you're correct on looking at that ship. It's a nineteen sixty six. It actually did not seize over seas combat, but it was built for Vietnam. So it's been stateside the whole time. Um, it has been rebuilt twice. Once before Kirk bought it, and he bought it in, um, two thousand and ten. Two thousand and eleven, and he completely rebuilt it. The only, we have pictures of it in the shop, and the only thing left was the frame. And so it has all the parts. It's all built for high altitude. It has fast fin, which is helps with the, 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 the output. Um, it, it's a, it's a brand new shiny jacked up truck in an old chassis. But it's, um, it's the top of the line. It, every hundred hours, it goes in for maintenance. And so what's nicer with the lease is that is the responsibility of the owner of the ship. So Kirk Kelsey has taken very, very, um, has set high standards on his performance of his helicopters. And it's actually a super Huey because of this new tail fin that it has, that actually is going higher than what, um, the regular UH one inches shoot. Yeah. Yeah, you look at it.
Maybe you dropped the ball, hold there, they came back here.
Paint job helped a little bit. That first year we had it, it was still just army green, and it looked like, you know, vintage sled. But, um, it's, it's new and shiny now, but it's, it's more of the guts of it, it's completely replaced, so it's all new. And that is the responsibility of the company though. Um, I would like to invite you guys at this time. I'd really encourage you guys to join us in the spring. I mean, if we are able to continue this, I'd like to see, have you guys see what these pilots are put through that first day. Um, I'd love to have you join to see what our short haul team does. And, um, and it will sit at the, the Marlton hangar all winter long. He's going to keep it here all winter.
Hey, well, thank you from my perspective of the, uh, really enlightening. So Ken, how hard would it be to, as, as you know, PILT and SRS has been under attack on Capitol Hill? Forever, right? And it's going to continue. How hard would it be to put together an executive summary of this five-year contract, given us an indication and talking points is we're out advocating for Sublet County on, on having those, educating us on what did we give for the last five years for this contract? How many lives that we touched, what are some of the lessons learned, or lessons, you know, that we would like to be different? Um, how hard would it be to put something like that together?
Not at all. To me, we can have anything you want. We have provided in the past, Joe Bowesman, on the actual video that he took back to NACO, and NACO used it as their promotional video of what actually is done with that money. And, um, they, you know, it worked for a couple of years, but, you know, you can assign them for that funding. Um, and I, I do know that I would appreciate you guys continuing, you know, the, the push for, for funding of that or other nature, but I would hope I would be.
Of course, someone that, yeah, that's very telling. You can always have with me, ever going on, or every time, have that discussion.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, any, anything else you guys would like to have too, please, you know, any emails, don't worry, and, you know, it's, yeah, follow at me.
Anything else?
I think the only two things is you guys were provided two pieces of paper, I think. Um, one is just twenty five at a glance, and I really want you to understand that we do more than just the helicopter. Within the twenty five missions, there's a list of some really, I think, important things that happened within a year. Our numbers are not large this year, which is three, that means we're being safe, at least getting home safe. Um, have caught us out, but from feeling fractures to, um, almost a drowning with two toddlers and four adults. Um, to assisting other parents with drownings, um, to the diabetic emergency I talked about, um, there's been some really good things happening that I'm really proud of my team. Um, and I think the thank you card that you guys received was very heartfelt from our team. Um, and this was a seventy five year old and a seventy one year old that was on ending their eight day hug. And he ended up with a fractured leg and, um, a monetary donation, but honestly, at the time she took the hand for all that card. Now lots are, so it's definitely for him in the office. Okay, done with me? Thanks for the time.
Well, I'm going to piggyback on this for just a second. Sheriff Lear, do you have anything that you'd like to add? It's not mandatory, but.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be, I'll be very, very fond. So, um, I think this is a, you know, a important asset that we have around the county, as a community, as a street, and, uh, understanding, you know, Congress has not reauthorized the SRS funding. That doesn't mean it's not in progress. Um, my understanding that they will supplement that if, if the legislation doesn't get that passed. And they would revert that to what's called the two thousand eight, uh, twenty five percent tax act. And granted, that is a, um, that is a significant decrease in the amount of funding that we're usually, that we're normally used to seeing as counties. Uh, however, they will still supplement, uh, what they can. And, uh, I'm hoping as, um, Chairman, uh, Commissioner White, uh, I said before, uh, that we can actually go to the federal legislature, uh, with, uh, information to, to let them know how important, uh, that Secure Real Schools Title III funding, PILT money is, uh, for counties, uh, like ourselves. And I know many counties, um, in the nation, uh, several states, uh, utilize this money specifically for emergency services and search and rescue function. So, yeah, thank you.
Any online questions, comments?
I don't believe so.
Great, thank you. I couldn't see you behind.
Morning, Chairman. Uh, I'm Steve Kip. I'm actually, uh, Director of the Board for Tifto Search and Rescue.
Thank you.
Have awesome support, uh, for these guys. Uh, and, and hopefully we give them as much as the, the volunteer side of things. Uh, I just want to put an exclamation point on something Ken said. Uh, doing these things without a helicopter, it turns from a only a half hour-ish timeframe mission through several days to get into the back country, obviously in the wilderness. Um, and versus some of the, the people we rescue, that's the, that's the difference between life and death, so. We want to support completely the sheriff and Ken and, and, and put that exclamation point down how important this resource is for us.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you for everything, thanks. Next, Amber Anderson.
Uh, first, sure, thank you. First, we need the opportunity to be here today just to give you guys a taste of, on, on the last three months of hack. We appreciate your, your time. Um, our representative, Andy Cora, and Stacy Elway, send their regrets, they're not being able to be here. Their jobs require them to capitalize on this weather, so maybe they'll be trying to change, right, that, my flow of colors, so. Um, but hopefully you've had a chance to review my report. Um, just kind of, um, highlighting a few pieces of it. So we wrapped up summer and the transition into fall, which is a really, a really heavy program and special event time for us. Um, so since July first, we hosted three big special events with a midnight on basic trail run, a three-on-three basketball tournament, and a people ball tournament. Um, as well as all of our ongoing summer programs, from swim lessons, our daily summer camp, fun club, Mermaid Clinic, um, and funning bug, as well as then launched into our fall activities with football and volleyball and return of school. Um, a few thank yous that I'd like to take the opportunity to make. First, thanks to, um, Kathy. First, thanks to Kathy, the youth programmer at the Southern County Library. She did a fabulous mermaid toddler evening time in the pool, which was a lot of fun. And we look forward to having her back to do a pirate speed breeding tank this spring as well. And then thank you to Officer Tolson for the tour of the jail with our Friday Go Ranger program. They really enjoyed it, none of them want to go back, so. And then one of the things that we're really proud of, that we're really just getting started is we were awarded a grant with the National Wrecking Park Association for out-of-school mentoring. And with this grant, we're incorporating the Catholic sort of ethics into all of our programs. From our, our actual programs, our summer camp, and then all of our sports programs. And so that takes 10 different Western values of like right for, right for the grant, live each day with pride, or courage, sorry, things like that. And incorporates them into all of the activities that we do. And we have what we call Trail Talks, that we spend time working with the kids on to help them, help them understand those values and how they can incorporate it into everyday life of what they do, so that's a really positive. And then a huge congratulations to our Recreation Supervisor, Tanah Billy. She was named this year's Miami Wrecking Park Association Outstanding Professional. So this is a statewide award, we're really proud of her efforts there, and all that she does with that, so. Moving into this next quarter, we will continue to host some events, we have lots of Halloween events. If anyone really likes Halloween and likes to be here, kids, come on over our way, we'll put you to work. As a volunteer, I will have a pie social, a couple holiday events, and then we'll be hosting some USAs swim meets. One of them being a very large meet that is actually ran by the Jackson USAs swim team, that they come down to host their events in our pool. We have three days, like almost 300 swimmers, a big, a big weekend for the community for sure. And then we are anticipating needing to shut down our competition pool for two weeks to do some repairs to the surge tank. So they did some initial stages of the repair yesterday. And we are finalizing with the crew that will do the repairs and holding a plan in between swim seasons. As not to interrupt swim team practices, or as normally as that. So, with that, I will answer any questions that you want.
Ms. Sanders?
Good.
You've done a great job over there, and thank you for everything. You're really impressive.
Thank you.
I made it right for myself, and it's the thing, both you, being a yourself, and the volunteer support there, of course. Thank you, appreciate you taking the time to show me your mind.
Haley Ruland, are you online?
She is, and I will unmute her. There you go Haley, you can unmute yourself now.
Hi, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning Haley.
Great, okay, well, good morning. The first thing that I wanted to bring up for the planning and zoning is the Moyes family homes. They have requested to terminate the 40-Rod West subdivision project. And I believe Dennis Forrester is there to represent this, and I can just hand it over to him.
Mister.
Is Dennis present?
Oh, he is. If you want to go up to the podium, Dennis? No.
I'm getting enough feedback, I wasn't following what you were saying, I apologize, please.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning. I am here on behalf of Jason Melendez Moyes. And we are requesting that the application for the 40-Rod West subdivision be terminated. And that Southern County would prepare and record resolution terminating the zoning on this 299-acre parcel from the current RR5 and RR10 zoning, reverting it back to the original C-1. As this project has moved forward, there's just been enough hit enough roadblocks and such that this project is no longer. And so it is our request to terminate this project and return the zone back to Ag. With that, I think I have talked with Haley on this some, I'm just gonna put a quick montage. So this project, we are in, we work at the preliminary plat stage with this project. So it wouldn't have come back before you, probably before December, if everything would have kept on going. At that time, if that would not have come forward, it would have been calculated to revoke the zoning status on this parcel anyway. So we are just requesting that we terminate this project and revert the zone.
Thank you, appreciate it. Questions? How rich drafts do you guys have? Do you have the draft ready to send the second one?
I didn't give it to you in your regular packets, I sent it in a separate email, so.
When you've been announced.
Did I, I think I might have clipped it to additional AP, is that where it's at? There you go, that's it.
Revert back Clayton, you don't have to do any fine news or anything, you just adopt this resolution.
Yeah, let me come up there real quick. Good morning, gentlemen. So this is one of the places in your current regulations that is clunky at best, if you're gonna describe it. So the way that it currently describes the way there is, the way that zoning change is terminated, it essentially requires, for all intents and purposes, the same action, because it says initiated the same way as a zone change. So for discussions, say if the county were to pursue the process of terminating the change, that would have to go through a notice of appearance at the planning and zoning level, and then another nervous, another hearing at board county commissioners level. This doesn't make logistical sense from the perspective of when an applicant or landowner is simply saying, hey, I asked for this, but I don't want to do it anymore. So you all essentially can do it two ways. You could sign this, which essentially just terminates the zoning at the request of the, at the request of the landowner. Or you can tell them, no, go through and ask and go through the entire process. It is one of the areas that I suggested with Haley and then also with Dennis previously, when he was in that, in that role as planning zone administrator, that this be a process that is updated to provide more clarity in the new regulations. Because it just doesn't, it simply doesn't make sense to have an applicant go back through, have a planning and zoning meeting wherein what the planning and zoning is gonna recommend, no, don't let it go back to Ag. Ag is the base, Ag is the base zoning. Realistically, from the logistics perspective, when you have a landowner requesting you to go back, I see no reason why the county doesn't have the authority at this point to go ahead and terminate at their request. The other piece to keep in mind on this is that where the current project sits is a little bit of a procedural, it's an interesting piece procedurally, because right now, the zone change has been approved, but the the subdivision plat, it's in that stage between preliminary plat and final plat, which candidly sits in your lap. It is currently before you, so to speak, from the procedure perspective, to a currently final plat. So right now, for all intents and purposes, this zoning and the subdivision plat tied to it is in front of you. So for all intents and purposes, you're denying final plat at this applicant's request. And the denial of final plat also exists, also is what is required for substantial completion within the two years. So for all intents and purposes, you're essentially just ending the zoning, terminating it, going back. If that makes any sense at all. It's the cleanest way to move forward on having it go back to, without requiring. End that question for me, please.
Three months ago, we had Mr. Sherbal in here and Mr. Height in here. Something similar, but I'm sure not the same. And at that point in time, they wanted to revert back, I think, to A. Does that ring a bell?
It does.
They were going from RR10 or something back to Ag, because they were adding more land to the person.
And at that point in time, I thought that the question was raised. And we pointed them to go back through the resulting process. So is that something that they didn't need to do?
They didn't speak to change it in the first place.
Okay, good enough.
So that's, that's our.
I wanted to show you that process. Everything that we had carried across the board, yet in that regard.
And that makes perfect sense. Yeah, they had not initiated the process originally, they combined. And they may have, I'm trying to remember procedurally, they may have those many, many years before. I'm trying to remember, but this one is, as I was mentioning, it procedurally still stands before you waiting for approval of final.
But and I'm not disputing what's occurring here, Dennis, was just going back to did we need to do anything else in regards to Height's property? Meaning can we just automatically approve it to go back?
I think there was the discussion there that we probably could have, but we preferred to take the other route.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about this resolution?
Questions from online or within our attendees? Please, state your name and.
Do you have it in the mic?
Yeah, mine up, please.
Hi, Commissioners, Chairman, my name is Kelly Grabner. I'm on the board of CHIR, which is Citizens United for Responsible Energy and Development. And I just had a couple of questions. My background personally is more on the energy side, so I'm not as familiar with the development and planning and zoning. One question, when it, when it reverts back to agricultural, obviously, Mr. Moyes is a businessman, he purchased this to develop it and make some kind of profit. What are his options going forward? Can he like divide that into, say, 40-acre parcels? And move forward in that way? I'm just curious what, what might happen next with this parcel? And I don't know if anyone here can answer that, but it's a question that came up.
I'll defer that to Haley, are you with us?
Yes, I am still on here. I am still learning the code, but the applicant, based off of the property size, which is about, is 291 acres, I believe, it still could be subdivided in the future. And it could be subdivided into 35-acre agricultural zoning lots without requiring rezoning. It could possibly go through a rezone process again if the applicant chose to do that. Clayton, do you have anything you want to add to that, too?
No. I, I'm not on the mic, but now.
And then just, I know that the, this proposal faced a number of issues and hurdles. And I'm just curious what was kind of the final deciding factor, was it just a conglomeration? You know, was it, I'm curious if like that, there was a study done on the highway? And what would need to happen there if they needed to make a lot of changes? Which I think would have been perhaps very costly, because that was a factor, or what, what the factors might have made.
I don't know, Dennis, could you give us a fact of the matter with that? Or not?
Right, Chairman, basically I have mentioned previous just, some of it is financially, you know, driven that this project is just not feasible. So, and it's, you know, as far as plans, other plans moving forward, I do not have any idea. Recognize that, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any further question or comments from anyone online or here? We have in front of us a resolution number 25 of the board. Fully addressed. Are there any actions that the board have seen or done?
I don't. You do, you want you to do it, I do. I'm getting, getting, getting into the game a little bit. So Dennis, obviously, not to lie, supporting the facts, but aside, I'm wondering if you could ask Mr. Moyes, once we get this done, if he would be amendable to allow the public to park in that small area that he has a camera set up to keep people from parking there. That's been there 65 years, by knowledge, never really planning, you know. Understandable, except he's been actually doesn't like that. Concerns there, where it shall be settled, okay, or perhaps. It would be, you know, to move over it like that.
And that's not part of this.
I know that, I know.
And one.
That would be a question that you could pose to Mr. Moyes in the.
Well, you're here, I guess I'll talk about that. I, I guess I could. I'd appreciate it.
Chair?
Ready, sir? Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve the resolution to terminate previous changes. Zoning district boundary pursuant of the Chapter 8, Section 2, Southern County Zoning and Development Regulation, as termination of a previous change of zoning district boundary reclassifies 299 acres more or less from rural residential five-acre zoning RR5 and rural residential 10-acre zoning RR10 to its original zoning of agriculture zoning A1. This parcel is located on the northerly intersection of Paper Road 23-150 and Highway 181/150.
A motion by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion, by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Vickery. On resolution number 25 as presented. Are there any further discussions, comments, or questions? Noted, all in favor of resolution number 25 as presented, signify by the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
That'll, that'll work. I need to put a resolution number on it as well, so. It'll be fine, it'll, yeah, go ahead and sign that. Dennis, I'll get that to you once it's recorded, okay? I'll get you a copy.
Commissioners, when I am still on the line, can I please provide a quick update with planning and zoning if there's? Commissioners, when I am still on the line, can I please provide a quick update with planning and zoning if there's time?
Update.
Just one, stick of update.
Reduce the feedback or echo or something? Thank you.
Is that any better?
He turned his microphone.
I turned his.
Okay. Because we're not getting the head, that he has feedback.
I'll test it again. Any feedback?
I don't hear any feedback, Haley.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to provide an update about planning and zoning. The Planning and Zoning Board met last week and discussed the tower code developments. And we faded two page out of nine pages into the proposed code. And we will be having another workshop on November 6th, so that will be a special meeting. The November 20th meeting is the regular scheduled planning and zoning meeting, and that will include the tower code development as well as a minor subdivision for the double J ranch and a proposed rezone to develop a three acre residential lot as part of an agricultural property for the, for the minor subdivision. The gas ranch for the Boulder Crest Foundation. I want, that was, that's been tabled to come to the Board of County Commissioners. The applicant has requested that this be presented to you at the December 2nd Commissioners' meeting. We will be sending out public notices and putting this in the newspaper again. Since we've already, the, the time has lapsed between the planning and zoning meeting and by the time this occurs in December. The, the Union Tower application for in Big Piney that is still tabled, a date has not been determined yet or a plan of action from the applicant. So I will keep you informed when a decision has been made from the applicant. And our office, we're still just busy with permits. I think a lot of people are trying to get septics installed and try to do some last minute construction before the snow flies. And I did want to also mention just a side note that the, I'm sure you all are aware of this, and I think it's come up in a couple of meetings, and the recent rezone from this summer. But Blue Spruce Operating LLC, they did file a permit with the DEQ for the industrial siting. And they will be conducting a public hearing. It's more of a permit hearing, presentation, pre-application hearing on October 28th and 29th. And this will be in La Barge, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that this is just presenting the permit application and that this permit will be going through that, that DEQ industrial siting process. That's all that I have. If you have any questions.
Any questions for Haley? Thank you, Haley. Appreciate everything.
All right, thank you.
Hey, up we have Clayton Malinkovich, followed by Janice Saxton. At 1 o'clock is Jana Lee, like, both moving unless there's an issue between Clayton and Janice to after lunch. Possibly following Jana Lee and meet our lunchtime now, or we can continue moving forward.
That makes me very angry.
I wasn't addressing you. Thank you. Anyone, any commissioners?
I think that's a great idea.
Hey, did you hear that, Clayton?
I did. That also makes me.
Makes me angry, that's.
Okay. We'll take a break for lunch. And it's 1 o'clock. Up next is generally 1 o'clock.
We're gonna do then after.
I think there's all the report that. We need to pick out the first. Have a think.
I have.
So based on the information that you've given us, I saw you're doing this and you're in last year's first quarter to this year's first quarter.
Yep.
And then tying it back into our current year fiscal year 26 budget to see where everything is setting. Just from an overall perspective. And the difference between fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26, you have spent just shy of $46,000 less than last year.
Yeah.
And a lot of that is coming from vaccine and $35,000.
So I will pre-warn you that we just bought a whole bunch of COVID and flu and as of today, like, I just ran the numbers in October, we've given 300 high dose flu, 200 regular flu and almost 200 COVID shots. So some of those bills are just going to be on the next quarter here.
Which is fine.
Yeah, that would be the same for income too, because are going to lose the lead on that greater volume of vaccine shipments.
And so when you bring up income and we take a look at it for fiscal year 25, you were at 82,000 and for this year, we have this guy of $108,000.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that Janice and I were looking at, like on last year's income, like under prevention coordinator. You know, like sometimes all of our grants, so we submit for reimbursement. So like Becky's expenses for September, Steve's info grant were just submitted here in October, and then sometimes it takes a couple of months to get reimbursements. So I think a little bit, you know, probably $8,000 of that could be higher from last year. We got a new charting system called KIRMD, and that's helping with billing. So we're starting to really recapture. We charge a $20 admin fee for appointments for shots. And so we're getting a lot better at, at getting those charges built out. And we probably see a pretty substantial increase overall this year. It'll be very interesting to see. You know, recapture more money from insurance for this appointment. The other thing that Janice and I were looking at last year, Johnny and I found that we weren't really, some of our money, like for the vaccine line on the revenue side, it comes in different ways, like it comes in for Medicare, it comes in from insurance, comes from Medicaid. I don't know. And all the places that Johnny bills to. But we made it on the revenue side, working with Jessica at that time and Emily to have, to make sure that all our vaccine profits were actually coming back into the vaccine line. So if you look under our public health nurse fees, those kind of numbers just really flip flopped because it actually, this year is reflecting money into the lines they should have gone to. Sometimes you don't know things until you learn them, then you try to make it better.
And you apply for a number of, quite a few grants?
So if you look at, so I was going to tell you this, okay, like the bioterrorism grant is our public health emergency response coordinator grant. And that I just got no expectation we had at the beginning of the fiscal year when we were looking at it, and they, they thought they would only be funded at like 75%. They actually got awarded their full war, that piece for Steve's salary benefits, traffic and stuff. But I think I've mentioned it to some of you, we actually did turn in this resignation for that position. And then I'll be looking at the, fill that. But that's one that comes through the state. We don't have to apply for it. We just do our annual contract between the county and the state to do that, to do that program.
He's saying, but his position's 70% paid for, yes.
Same thing for mention. It comes through the state. We just do the contracts between the city and the county to offer those programs and it pays for all persons. We don't have any more COVID funding. She did apply for that little maternal child help grant, which is like 8,500 to provide some maternal child health stuff. And then she did apply for another CDC youth prevention grant, but that's really stalled right now and in federal. If you see some. Here, on that, we haven't done one.
So I look, when I look at both the expenditures and the income generated this point in the first quarter this year, there are approximately $70,000 toward overall change on this.
Perfect.
For fiscal year 26. Is your 25, almost 26,000 over on revenue?
So if you looked at that extra, like if we would have that extra $8,000 in first quarter last year under prevention, and then that other maternal child, 8,500 to our grant she got, we bring it up.
For the revenue side, you see the maternal family health for $8,500 for this year.
Yeah.
And then we have a increase.
There was just a little accounting error last year on, you know, like, or it's just a misreflection, I think, because that's 9,755 there, should have been 232110.
You see anywhere you think? I wouldn't be a little bit wrong.
Somewhere right here. This quarter's numbers does that really, isn't a very accurate number. Okay. It's because of that. Almost reflected last year.
Kind of timing, is it right? Since we got by nighttime, we're looking at.
But if it wasn't recorded correctly, it was still recorded some by sales. Which the roles for that time period still reflects that.
Right, okay.
So based on the budget this year, you're looking at basically, basically not all, how would go up? 260,000 dollars. Yeah. It involves a line. Looking at one six budget of 611 change, the AB is coming in of 405.
Okay.
Is there anything that comes up that? Then of course for the commissioners, there's a list of expenses printed out for you, for you. Following the sheets. When we look at everything overall for you. Yeah. What are the pressure points that we can do to address with you?
So Jessica and I talked about, like, usually in the spring with Kerry long, we transfer, or you know, we had money coming from our revenue side that we, let me say, it's great, got posted back in the spring. Can you explain it? So Jessica and I talked about, like, actually maybe when we do budget.
When we do a budget transfer in December, April, and June for Jana's revenue accounts to do a journal entry back to her expense account so that her her accounts look, it's not just revenues coming in on the revenue side and her expenditures, but it's just reflecting more of a real time accounting in her budget, within her budget.
Referring to a current loss innocence.
It's just, I think that Jana requested that her revenues be posted back to her expenditure accounts, but it was only done once a year. Correct, Jana?
Yeah, so in the past, you know, like, I didn't, we didn't have a, like, we set our vaccine line at 91,000. And I, we always overspend that. But then they would post back the revenue into that vaccine line. That's what Kerry, how Kerry handled it.
It would be referred, I would think, with an accounting standpoint, to show the revenue as a standalone item and keeps these expenses up actual expenditure amount, so you can see what we spent versus what came in. But to combine them to say, well, like, if it was this expensive and that is this, and we suppose that's that's not the ideal way to account for that, that expense.
So we will have a but this, this will definitely helps me wrap my head better, you know, and helps us as we go along all year to, to take accounting of revenue versus expenditures. But I did base my budget on that last year of putting the revenue back into the vaccine line, at least in the spring, because otherwise I will overspend. It's all online.
Well, if you keep them as two standalone line items, revenue and expense, it gives a true picture of what's occurring.
Okay.
And I think that accomplishes what you're looking for. When you co-mingle the income and expenses, you don't have a correct picture of what's occurring.
And it'll, hopefully, within the next few months, I'll be able to take some trainings with Open Gov and the, it will reflect there for you. If, if Jana's budget was figured that way for fiscal year 26, though, I think we should probably follow through the way it was done and then make any changes the next.
It, it still can be done that way, where you take the two individual line items and carry them over to a summary column and follow that down that way, and it accomplishes the same thing.
I mean, I would probably have doubled that number in the vaccine line if I wasn't planning on making an adjustment in here. For at least $150,000.
Please, Janice.
Mr. Chairman, I hope I don't muddy this more. I hope I clean it up, but I'm sorry if I don't. And I know I heard Sam in this budget year talk about this very thing when he's talking about the library. You have allowed a certain amount of expenditures, and she has understated her vaccine expenditures because she knew revenue was going to come in to offset that. Some of that revenue is from other county departments, am I correct? For instance, you do vaccines for the sheriff's office. And so because she has understated that expenditure line, thinking there was going to be a journal entry to offset it with some revenue, she will ultimately go over her entire allotted expenditure budget that you had approved. And there are statutes that say no department can go over that without some action. And so you would have to determine if you don't want a budget adjustment to account for that the way it has been done in the past.
We're happy to set that up next year, but that's, that was under the direction of, you know, working.
Let's take a look at it, see if there's any work going on. Yeah.
The other pressure point that there's, you'll see a few negative numbers in on the expenditure pages. And so if we do blood work, we do initial blood work for the sheriff's office. on the expenditure pages and so if we do blood work, we do initial blood work for the sheriff's office for new employees and then like vaccines for other departments, sometimes people in maintenance are giving their hepatitis shots and stuff. So I talked to Jessica about, it's always been a journal, internal journal entry, but it gets kind of sloppy and sometimes it's confusing where instead of like, we just send them a bill. If the county just got a check back to us, then it's, you don't see all these negative numbers and there's confusion against the department.
Nice. I found an email to all the departments that we were doing those journal entries for and they were all in favor of just paying vouchers, so not a problem.
Does that mean just send the bill to that department? They turn it in on a voucher, it gets paid. For the other process.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for, um, generally commissioners?
I just have one, I need to, sure, it was a question. So when I look at the budget first quarter of the year, you know, eight, um, this year.
If you guys remember last year, you gave me a six thousand dollar stipend, so we did upgrade our state car. Yeah, we had the hundred thousand miles, so we did upgrade it to the old drive. That's a difference. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any, any questions from online?
Yeah, my nurse wages are so I still have an open until time position, for a nurse position advertised at the state. I might count a couple applicants with you. But yeah, that has been you guys pay thirty-five percent and the state pays sixty-five. So that's just an ongoing, that's been a little difference, just because you, the commission allowed me to hire six people, I'll partner under the county to, to work a day, sometimes two, especially during this busiest part of the year, so much, you know, not very much. But sometimes I think you'll see some fluctuation quarter to quarter right now in that expenditure where, if we actually got permanent staff, then it's still, still be on budget, but it would just be, which we want all differently.
The lack of paying is the reason you always have with opening? And the state says.
Eighteen cents, thirty-two dollars and ninety cents an hour. No negotiation, doesn't matter if you have ten years of experience or not. We're at the land of, I need forty-one dollars an hour. I mean, we're at the land of the legislature to get a raise, so. Somebody has to go to the workplace, you know, and, and want the schedule and want the work, you know, want the, the job. Which there's a lot of good things to this job, but we aren't, we aren't being able to compete with with hospital or whatever, so right now.
And they can't compete with the other areas, so.
No, and let's go to, to Jackson for fifty dollars an hour, so.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah. I did want to do a couple things on the end, if that's okay?
Please.
So yeah, Steve Kip is resigning as at the end of November of his current P H R C role. And with your permission, then I'll start forward and there is funding at least through the fiscal year for that position. A full-time position. On the February gene, if that monetized. That is the year you're based on funding position.
No objection. More than.
And then, um, I just wondered if there's any information or progress on our, on the building, so.
We are awaiting the results of an appraisal to determine the next steps moving forward.
Yeah.
And until we fully identify what's occurring, we're kind of limbo like you are.
Okay.
So you'll be one of the first to know.
Thank you.
Well, I haven't forgotten you.
I know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Up next, Ray Blinovich. Good.
Yes.
District Chair, you would ask about that you look for executive sessions.
Yes, sir.
In that we all went into maybe sixteen, four, four, five, eight, run at nine. And there'll be things otherwise comprehensive by law. So the stuff that I've got. And thank you to Jessica on this, Mr. Reno will be attending her November the first meeting in November for his schedule, so some of the, to discuss the visionary grant we need. That works for you all. And then the others thing that I wanted to bring, um, for my leases, I ordered on long lease for the proactive building, excuse me, that favorite property, and forwarded that to the folks at proactive, they had a couple of structural changes in that lease, which I will update and then get to chairman for a new signature on that, it's just basically just adding a signature on it for both members of that, of that, to please. But the other request that was made was a request for changes to see if the county would pick up. See if I can actually read this word, word, here we go. Hoping to have the building's cleaning service picked up by the county since the other county buildings are maintained. So I am passing a mandatory to you to see if you want to make that modification in the lease.
This is a month-to-month lease, or?
That is correct. Months-to-month with anticipated leases. Just to end that, so it is month-to-month, but it is.
They want daily cleaning of the building, daily janitorial service, trash, everything?
I'm reading a report here, she didn't specify timeline, but just the building's a cleaning service, so I don't, I don't know what that looks like.
Who's been doing the cleaning on that in the past, was the hospital district, or something?
No, they've been doing it themselves, I'm sorry. Um, Chairman, when I was talking to Leanne about the, the lease payment, she said that she wanted to see if the county would take over the janitorial services, that they had been doing it themselves. So correct.
Same, right, but they weren't paying.
Yeah.
Personally, absolutely not.
Yeah. We can, um, find out how much on the monthly cleaning basis and add it to the lease and.
Yeah, we don't, uh, we don't want to send Andres crew over there. We have no business in their business. To me, I mean, we don't, you know, I mean, they've got offices and, I mean, that's, that's not good, my person.
I will pass that along.
No, no, you get the rest of the guys.
Oh, pass that along. Pass on to Dave Stevens. Is that, I'm.
Is that a voting issue?
I don't think you guys need to vote on it, that's the consensus that I'm seeing, so I will relay that. As I mentioned, I will have a updated lease for you to sign, chairman, but it's the exact same as the one you already signed, but it just has two signature lines, so it's a different, so I have.
Ladies and Mr. Chairman, how long before we're going to discuss appraisal and what their future, what they want to do?
We'll be calling executive session in ten minutes.
So the other lease that I wanted to bring up is the lease with, at the summer building. So we are, I, I, I got an updated lease on that. That just sure if I didn't have the chance to get it printed out, but if you all could, I can, you know, to all, we can discuss it the next meeting, or we can give ballroom it right now. It is what was anticipated. Was discussed the last meeting, that, that office there for the veterans administration person would be eight, seven, five. They are looking at hiring someone right now, they don't have anyone hired right now to get. But they were more than happy to stay in that building. I did mention that, that we were doing a month-to-month lease, that could change.
I thought we were going to discuss coming down here, I talked to Carrie about moving them in down here.
Yeah, if you guys want to do that.
You said the office they have here has room for their violent cadence and they're more than welcome to set up urban shop there.
Okay, they can talk to us about that, see if it'll work.
They can discuss if they don't pay rent there now, so, I guess, I'm just like, fire them.
I have no question with.
Yeah, I don't know whoever they're hiring, maybe you better know that.
Okay, I will, let me, I will circle that back around with him and make sure that they're in the loop, see if there's an issue there and just put this place on hold until we get back. I do believe, I, I do need to figure out who's actually been paying it for the last couple months, so there may be an invoice coming from brighter properties to pay if the hospital district stopped paying, we need, I need to figure that piece out, but we can, we can hire that, too bad. Okay, that's what I have for you all. I can give you an update on industrial siding if you wanted. But other than that, that's, that's what I've got, unless you all have, oh, we have credit cards, I'm putting them on the back end of that. Unless you want to, okay, so let's do that, because it's on the agenda. I forwarded along the proposed policy, I didn't see any major concerns with it, ultimately, as I suggested, you know, I sent you all an overarching procurement policy for travel policy. It's probably oriented to go hand-in-hand with credit card policy, but this policy just essentially covers the nuts and bolts of who can use the policy, who can use credit cards, how it's to be done, so on and so forth, but this is just like from the, from the credit card policy that you all have, and so, and you all are the policy folks, so any change you would like to make to that, we can update it. Do whatever you like.
So Mr. Chairman, credit card policy, we don't have to determine that yet, don't we?
No, we're not, we're not.
But this is all pretty stuff, that's good. Did you ask, why, why would that be? Make sure it was ground rules or because it's, it's, it's something that we have ordered, something agreed to, right? It's a policy of operations.
I'm very sort of, there's all kinds of types, you know, this, you guys actually.
Is it pass?
Okay, so, one, I think, I was out of the stand, don't eat. I said, oh, I should keep those. Affirmative. Four to one, wasn't it? Well, I don't care, they take my pocket.
No, we're not, we're just trying to get a clarification here. So, so if we vote on, what are we talking about today then? The procurement policy, how it's going to be handled if somebody does wrong.
Operations of the credit card, how it's set up, how it flows, how it's accounted for, and then we have procurements to go with that, and also the mileage for a pretty M C. Well, when I read Clayton's little export data on, for them, scared me to death.
I sent one out, Clayton didn't forward it on.
You didn't reply, you didn't use the, the reply all button?
I sent it just to you to give professional advice first.
You did?
You didn't send any back.
Well, I mean, looked at it, I forwarded.
I thought it was pretty simple, you wouldn't have to look things up every time to see what the government rate was.
Or clearly, clearly, not my, my entire, you know, wasn't consumed by you. But I did forward it along to you, we had a good chat. Because somebody's now nipped into the chat G P T. Awesome.
I'm lost. So, three thousand, four to one against me, I want to be, or want to take off here on that deal. So here's what, here's what I actually believe. Anytime there's a large expense going out there someplace, travel, going to go someplace, thirty, three, or four, five nights and what have you. In my world, the first thing we do is we make the phone calls and get everything set up, we know what we're going to, just going to cost this, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that, and using, I'm going to say five hundred dollars as a threshold. Anything over that we, we can it can be authorized by one, one credit. It comes out of the clerk's office, because you're going to make these. You're, you're not going to get up in the morning and put it like this, you're not going to get up in the morning and say, oh yeah, by the way, I got to go forward. So I gotta go, get me a plane ticket, you're going to make arrangements ahead of time. You can have the costs associated with this. So having said that, one credit card that comes out of the clerk's office, the authorization of those expenses behind the name. And the five hundred dollars, I see them all the time. Folks are paying a lot more than the five hundred dollars. And they must be happy with it because they're getting huge points on their credit card for that. And then they can re, we can reimburse or look at it as a reimbursal expense, which we've done all along. In other words, if it hasn't broke, why aren't we trying to fix it? Now, I understand the higher expenses. And I understand that it's not right for those people to pick that up if it's a justified training situation, or whatever it is. But as far as giving out X amount of credit cards with the county's name on it, I'm not favored with that at all. One is enough to take care of the major expenses, set that, set that way, one, the two hundred dollars, I don't care. But set it someplace, so it's like, anything over that, and if it requires overnight stay, where it can be an expense, I understand that, then I see no issue with the one credit card taking care of that stuff. The rest of this, it's going to end up being a nightmare, I guarantee you. It just will, you have too many people who want to go too many places, we use too many county credit cards, period. And once those credit cards, at least in my world, are stuck in the little machine, you're going to get that, you're not going to have an opportunity to look at those expenses like we do now, just not going to. And I defy anybody here to say, well, you should have spent that, so you're going to have to pay for it yourself. No, that's not. It's, it's going to, just going to go ahead and absorb it as the county, it's most of it stuck in the language. So that's my speed, why this, I'm not favored in this credit card thing at all. One, for major, major expenses. Thank you for your input. Anything from the commissioners?
Well, under monthly, here's the second paragraph, that you keep dual receipts, you know, you keep one, turn one in. I don't know, I mean, is that something you can stick with, having everybody have a receipt that match their credit cards and?
Right now, that's what everyone does already, it's just their credit card receipt versus one that says Sublet County, it's a it's a receipt that says Dave Stevens. So it's, it's exactly what we're doing now, it's just that credit card receipt now has Sublet County on the signature line instead of the employee's name. So that's, that's not any different than what we're already doing.
So what problems have you encountered with people bringing in receipts? I mean, you check those receipts, what's, I mean, every item that's on those receipts?
So I don't have to share with Dave. Um, well, I've only been through a few accounts receivable cycles, but if we have a question about a receipt, the employee can get something off of their bank statement, their credit card statement. Have a question about a receipt, the employee can get something off of their bank statement, their credit card statement to show the charge or, but. No, I mean, most people just make a copy of all of their receipts on a piece of paper and we attach that with the invoice, so. We haven't ran into many problems with people not turning in. We won't, we won't put it through if it doesn't have a receipt, so.
So, so the per diem and the credit cards are both gonna be on the same thing when we decide something?
No, we're going on them separately.
I mean, that's what I thought, you know, where he said. Statement he made.
Well, that was just the agenda.
Okay, well, that's what I meant. You said them kind of together and that's why I took.
It's on the agenda. It's listed as one kind of joint discussion, but they would be two separate policies.
For the credit cards that we're talking about. Uh, and what we voted on and agreed to is the clerk will be responsible, of course, for the. Uh, distribution of the credit cards. Each department head will sign for a credit card and they're responsible for that correctly at any time incorrect. The department head will then uh, issue to. Wanda, whoever Wanda is. She's going on a trip. Wanda signs a release form. Accepting complete uh, responsibility for the card, gives it to the department head. When she comes back, she has two days to provide all uh, receipts for that. And then it's packaged together. When the monthly statement comes in for uh, the credit card package, I anticipate it to be a, a company issue where there's multiple cards. Uh, tied to a master account. Um, that portion that's assigned to Wanda's department. That forces the statement goes to her. A supervisor that supervises takes and gathers the receipts associated to that billing cycle. Balances the statement, approves it, and gives it back to the clerk's office. It's a standard accounting procedure that's been used for decades, nothing new with this. Yes, if, if the employee does not provide the receipts. Then they're billed back. A dollar amount, um, that they have not accounted for. And then they're big kick. Comes dropped out of their paycheck. And if they're not here, if they happen to quit in the interim, uh, then the release form look. Form that they have signed. Taking responsibility for the uh, financial transactions on that trip. Uh, flow back to Clayton and he takes them to court. For fulfillment, for, for fulfillment of payment of those obligations. Is there any part of that that you'd like to address, Clayton?
Um, no, I was gonna make a difference about whether my supervisor's name is Marion. And he had barrier on Marion and Wanda, if they were the best of friends.
They hated each other.
Marion and Wanda?
Oh, it's terrible.
What? Missed this. It's Joe. Okay. Uh, you, you pulled Wanda and the only time I've ever heard his name, Wanda, was in that Dixie Chicks song. You know? So long, Earl.
No idea what you mean.
You lost him way back there.
I guess I, I don't, but anyway.
So that's, that's the overview of how it works. And it is. Something that. I find extremely distasteful. To have employees pay for anything for the county. They're not paid to be our bank. Just tell what it is. Your ranch hand, Commissioner Vickery, is not paid to be your bank when you send them to the store for anything. It's a commodity. That is not, I'm just stating this, it is my turn. Ranch hands, that's not part of your corporation or company. Do not pay for anything for your business. And that's good business, by the way.
Well, maybe I will be. I can't, I can't argue with that.
Well, then there's no need to argue with me about it either because that's how it is.
Okay, so in your business, how many credit cards do you distribute to athletes, folks that work for you?
Probably twenty.
Really?
Correct. This is nothing to sample in your business.
I don't really know.
It's not under fifty, I can guarantee you. This is in the.
No, it's not. No, we're talking about, we're talking about the taxpayers' money and giving people the credit card to spend it as they see fit.
No, that's not how it is.
Well, that's how it looks to me like it.
Well, then you need to read the information. No, if you wanna cross that bridge with me, I'll tell you exactly. That employee has to get authorization from their supervisor to spend that money. They didn't arbitrarily spend it.
Okay. See how this all works out. But I'm not favored in the credit card going out in eighteen, what is it, eighteen different entities within this county? Is that right? Eighteen different departments, I wanna say.
We can rescind it and take it back at any time.
Okay. But I'm just, that's, um, that's my stand. I'm not favored, but that's fine. That's why we.
Well, and I, I have the. Right to review anything you say.
Correct.
So it's done. Thank you. Anyone else can add to join us? Good enough. Everything that I've discussed is what we've agreed to as a commission. We can move ahead with the credit card uh, authorization. For the different departments with a different. Uh, employee signing off with responsibility. Where that department's credit card. And then clerk sets up the accounting system associated with that. Yeah, great.
Question, please. So if I've got a county credit card.
We're not gonna give one.
No, I don't want. But if I am one with a county credit card. I take off on a junket, okay? Now you just said it. You don't want me spending my money, right? So I'll use my personal credit card to buy stuff while I'm on a county mission. Do I get to submit that to?
Of course you do. Why wouldn't you?
That's my case.
What's the case?
You will find that out at some point.
Doug, I, I've gone through this for decades. This is nothing new.
Well, it is at the county level.
It is not. Across the nation. This is nothing new. It's, it's like trying to sell you a tractor when you, then you still horse and buck.
Well, yeah, you know what? Okay, I gotta buy the darn fuel. So there is an difference there.
So do, do we have enough to move forward with the?
You get, this is a, this is a sample policy. If you want to adopt this policy.
I like this policy.
You can modify. Yeah, you can modify and update this policy however often you want to. And yes, you know, to Commissioner Vickery's point, there are gonna be. Learning experiences along the way. This isn't going to work perfectly. And as those come up, then you guys can modify your policy to address. Did, did you catch that? I said that Vickery was right about something.
Clayton was hoping out of it. Um, anyone care to make motion accepting this is the credit card policy?
I'd make a motion to approve it and adopt the Sublet County Credit Card. Policy and agreement as presented.
Second, Doug? Let me try. Also. Only favored.
Fine.
By opposed. I think it's. Uh, next to the employee, county.
We never tried one, ever.
Travel expense policy, is that the procurement?
Travel policy, per diem policy, however you all would like to move forward. As I had sent you all on an email. Uh, I worked through the per diem policy that you all had suggested. Uh, with the flat rate, there are some potential issues that come up with doing that. Uh, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention so you all could discuss it and decide how you would like to move forward regarding per diem. Uh, and as I had mentioned, I mentioned this a little bit a second ago as well, an overarching travel reimbursement policy. Would be beneficial and then per diem would, I would suggest that per diem just be part of that.
What do you mean by overarching travel policy?
Well, so it's nice to example along. So for discussion's sake, you do have in your employee handbook, you have a few, you, you touch on employee travel on, in a few circumstances. But we don't have uh, a policy regarding thresholds for hotel rooms, for example. And, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that we have employees that, that do this, but right now you. You could have a situation where a person's booking a hotel that maybe twice as much of somebody else is, is booking.
But this credit card could take care of that because that could all be taken care of at your department head before they ever go buy them one.
It, it could be, but what I'm suggesting is that when you have policies to guide your department heads, it helps them make that decision. So then if their employees come in forward and saying, hey, I really wanna stay at this hotel, um, that we're doing here, so on and so forth, and if it's outside of the, uh, outside of the threshold that is set by policy, it's pretty easy for a department head to say, well, I'm sorry, you, you don't have to pick a different hotel.
Well, that government standard of a hundred and seventy-five a night depends on the area, but basically a hundred and seventy-five a night, there's some of these places they go to. Through their education, I'm not gonna find one for a hundred and seventy-five.
Agreed. And that's what I'm trying to say is that you all can set. A policy on how to address that. The other thing that you can set a policy on is how do you address the situation when. Um, an employee is making a, is making travel for work and they want to uh, tack on to the end of it for personal reasons. And they want their spouse to be able to travel with them. What does that look like? You don't have policies right now.
But in the handbook, doesn't it say use your best judgment and be fair to the county in some form or another?
Sure, if you want, like, and that is a very vague and difficult thing for deciders, like you all, like yourselves. To address when an employee is following that policy or not. So I was just, it is my suggestion that if you're going to have a per diem policy, that you have an overarching travel policy to, to go with it. What does that look like? When are we, when are employees gonna be, are we gonna put guidelines and suggestions for department heads in terms of when is appropriate travel, in terms of when to leave? For the day, do, do we leave um, in the evening, get a, get a hotel the night before for, for a nine o'clock meeting in Rock Springs, or do we say, you know what? A hundred miles is, you're more than, you're more than capable of getting up and driving to a nine o'clock meeting in Rock Springs. So you're not going down and having a hotel tonight. Just things like that that may be, it may be helpful for your employees on a policy perspective.
Well, that, that part I, I guess I agree with, but I don't like the idea of having to have Jessica or Department Head, whoever it may be, look up the government rate and say, well, God. This week you can only spend this much.
Yes, well, and, and you're, you're kind of conflating two different issues. So per diem, I think is, is.
But they have a standard for rooms too.
They do. If you want to choose to do that as your, so if you're gonna adopt a per diem policy, you don't have to adopt the entirety of the G S A example policy. You can just adopt certain portions of it. And so that's what I'm suggesting is that if you're going into a per diem for meals and expenses, meals and incidentals. I would suggest use that one to get, that is already available on the G S A website. And, and you're exactly right, a hundred and seventy-five. A night for a hotel sometimes works out great, but other times, good luck, you're not gonna find one. So I'm not saying we, we should adopt that one in total, but I'm suggesting that. That per diem policy through the G S A is, is pretty much adopted by any government entity. And a lot of private entities because it, they go through and they do the economic analysis. They look at what, what counties. And cities are more expensive than others and they make those decisions that are already built in there. Uh, and from the tax perspective and from your uh, your, your compensation perspective with your employees, you're not running afoul of the law. By utilizing that as you were per diem for uh, for meals and incidentals. So that's my suggestion on that piece. But I'm, I'm suggesting an overall travel, travel policy. That would answer some of those questions of when does it make sense to stay overnight and when is it not? For example.
So I got. Okay, so I got that. How much money are we talking on the per diem today?
Sixty-seven bucks is what the government average is on meals.
Sixty-seven? And that's what we're gonna set it at?
No, it's partial. Right. No, that's what the government standard was last week.
So we listen necessarily.
Today. Thirteen for breakfast, fifteen for lunch, and twenty-seven for supper.
Uh, okay, so, so here, that, that's fair enough.
Oh, here's the question that I had. And Clayton said it right, and I've been to a few meetings over time, not recently, of course. Usually, when you go to one of these conferences or meetings or what have you. You have two, sometimes all three breakfasts are included in the sign up, so to speak. So if I've got. Sixty-seven dollars each day while I'm gone. That's money in my pocket because I'm gonna take advantage of the others. And me, for instance, I can get by on a ten cent breakfast, so to speak. I very seldom eat a lot. I do at these deals. Sometimes at night I'll have a bowl of soup. When I get through on a four, five, or six day deal, I can pocket three hundred bucks. You've already paid me to go to the thing. That's taken care of. I've made money. I'm happy client now. That's why I'm saying this deal is gonna create. A nightmare for somebody from the banking standpoint. I don't care how long it's been in this place. So we're gonna actually end up, in some instances, not all. Paying. People to go to these things other than what normally would be. And it will occur. Guarantee. Point of clarification, I've, and just, so I'm just trying to remind myself of our past history on this conversation. The conversation we had previous to this conversation on per diem. Is when this group gave me. That's very high level of points of what a per diem rate, what a per diem policy should be. You all had said a hundred dollars a day, flat rate, regardless of when you left or regardless of what meals you. Used. That was my recollection of what you all said. Here you go. Here's your guardrails, globalist policy. Am I remembering that correctly?
That's correct.
That was a four to one.
We missed. Oh, that, that didn't get that far. Doug threw the hundred bucks out there.
That's what I wanted to clarify. And I, that, that's where I was just confused.
And I seconded it.
So the, the issue that came up in that regard was the taxable consequences for that individual.
This was.
There was raised in emails. And I thought you said, oh, it's an email thing. Put me about a dollar and lots for the different areas, but. Am I remembering that correctly or not?
I don't remember sending the email out, but I can't pull up the website when we was in the government website.
Which wasn't a flat rate, but it very depending on. Region, yeah.
So for discussions.
Well, we missed the boat the first time, I'll say, Clayton.
I just wanted to point that out because occasionally I can be right about something.
This is the second case you won. Today.
Oh, boy. Uh, so for discussion's sake, I just, I, I plugged in. Our zip code. We'll not be three one three because we're, we're on three, but I put eight two nine four one. And the G S A actually loves Jackson and Pine Dale together in the same region. And so what they have is they have for those meals and I might expand incidental expenses is a total of ninety-two dollars a day. Um, or if you're gonna be in an area such as Sublet County or Teton County, if you're traveling to one of those areas. So it does change it based on your, your area. And of course, the G S A rate also has a first and last day of travel rate. They're assuming that you're having the, your, that, that first day is less of an issue and the same with your last day. So first and last is sixty-nine dollars. Uh, the rest of your travel is ninety-two. Um, for discussion's sake, if we wanted to plug in a new search and we wanted to do eight two nine, uh. It's on eight, two, nine, oh, one, which I believe.
What was the, uh? Did you stay in Washington when you went? Where, where did you stay?
D C.
So can you pull it up by city?
Sure. So I'll search, I'll search. I'll search Washington. So Mr. Chairman, if it helps any, there were two people about the other day. If you wanted us in Disneyland and that's a family of five, you can figure out spending a thousand dollars for breakfast.
If you want us in Disneyland and that's a family of five, you can figure out spending a thousand dollars for breakfast.
So are you putting in?
So for the District of Columbia, under the FY twenty-five, because we didn't have enough doctor updates for FY twenty-six. Yeah, no, FY twenty, so October twenty-five to September of twenty-six, meals and expenses for Washington DC is the same as Jackson, which is ninety-two dollars for a total.
So the hundred dollars wasn't far off the voting.
If you're going to DC, you're right. Um but for discussion sake, if you're looking at uh Cheyenne, that is the standard. Uh so they have this standard base rate, and then they have higher rates for different areas. So Cheyenne, for example, eight two nine oh one is the standard raised. Sixty-eight dollars total, fifty-one dollars first and the last day. And that sixty-eight becomes sixteen for breakfast, nineteen for lunch, twenty-eight for dinner, and five dollars for incidental expenses. And so procedurally, how this would work is that if you took a trip, you would then come back and on your forms, it would be developed by the county, either in conjunction with the clerk's office, um of what you would simply just check the boxes on what meals you are requesting. So for discussion sake, if I was to go to Cheyenne for a three-day meeting and I left at six o'clock in the morning and I and I left, if your policy said, yeah, you're doing, if you leave before seven AM, you claim breakfast. I left at six, I'm gonna check the box for breakfast. I get to my meeting, they have lunch for me at the meeting, so I'm not gonna check the box for lunch, nor I'm gonna check it for dinner, because there's dinner, it's at my conference. But I'm still gonna check the box for my incidentals. And then the next day, I'm on my, I have breakfast, but I'm on my own for lunch, not gonna check breakfast, but I'm gonna check lunch, so on and so. So then you have that total based on what meals you are claiming to account for, as Derek mentioned, when uh you get breakfast at a hotel or when you get breakfast at your at your conference or meeting or whatever it is that you're doing. That gets submitted, you get your dollar amount. And yes, if you paid, if you went and grabbed a uh but a Jimmy John's sandwich for eleven dollars for dinner, you would pocket seventeen dollars.
But this has to be looked up every time. We can't just suggest this in budget season, say it's sixty-eight bucks this year.
You could just.
Change it next year.
You could just simply adopt the GSA and then it puts it on, it it then it puts it on the employee when they're requesting. If they're going to somewhere like DC.
But then Jessica's gonna have to look it up and make sure they got it right.
But the employee, well.
If it's my employee, but if it's a different department, they would have to look it up, fill out the voucher, and then I we would have to check it, but.
Only if the name's done.
It won't be for me, I can assure you of that. So if you don't mind, if we're going through this. So if we're on this per diem, however many dollars a day it is, I go to this place to eat and it costs me another fifty dollars, do I pay for that out of my own pocket or do I add it on to this and not eat for the next two days? How does that work?
Yeah, for example, and this is, and I've been saying, I'm using this from my own experience, because I have operated under a per diem situation in previous jobs. So for discussion sake, if I'm out in the big city and I have somewhere else to eat than um than the really good Chinese and Mexican joints that we have in this area, and I wanna go to somewhere that's really nice, and I, because I'm in the big city and I'm so excited that I have more options to eat, and so I go somewhere, I'm thinking to myself, hey, my per diem's twenty-eight bucks. I usually don't order the steak, but I'm gonna go big tonight. I'm gonna have steak, and let's say I wanted to have a glass of wine, I wanna have that dessert, so on and so forth. My meal ticket comes in and it's seventy-five dollars for dinner. I paid for it out of my own pocket, and then I got my per diem of twenty-eight bucks. So at the end of the day, I'm feeling like, well, you know what, Suffolk County paid for the appetizer and part of my steak, but I chose to pay for the rest, and it is coming out of my pocket.
Right, I can, I can understand. This is fine, I I'm all for this, I'm just gonna. In the summertime, you go down to the drive-in and go buy hamburger, milkshake, or whatever else you would like. Twenty bucks. Now, I wonder, I wonder, when you go to Cheyenne, can you buy anything to eat down there for the fifteen or sixteen dollars? I would guess not. Last time I was there, it looked to me like it was seventy-five, eighty bucks to have a decent meal. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe they're gonna downsize it when we go up there, but my guess is not.
Who's gonna check on that guy to see if he really did eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
You have employees and they're supposed to be honest. You, I, that's probably one of the things you look for in an employee. You could check the com, you could, and this can be up to each department. You can have, so for example, if when I go to the State Bar Conference, it has in the conference materials what it is. And it it says in the conference materials what meals will be provided. And as a department head, I could check and see if Gaston wanted to go to what National Institute of Trial Association Attorney's uh training in Washington DC, and I get the thing, I could say, you know what, Gaston, you you can't claim lunch because lunch is available at the conference.
I would add to that, Commissioner Bradley, that all of them have agendas or or the meeting schedule, and they will show you. So that it would be on the department head or the elected official to look at that, look at that ahead of time before they approve the per diem.
This might be fixed, well, it's not, bro. Might be easier just to approve what comes before you.
I'm saying that's exactly, but if you're gonna go on a long trip, gonna be overnight for three times, you know, going in, you've made those reservations, it's not like they've said before, you didn't get up in the morning and say, yeah, we're gonna take off for Cheyenne, we're gonna be there three days, you've made those reservations, you know what those motel rooms are, are. You know what it's the, all the rest of the stuff, big stuff, it's gonna cost. I have no issue with one credit card authorizing that for whomever, whichever department it is. And then put a number up there for you. Two hundred and three, I don't care. Use your own credit card. I'll guarantee you, part of the employees, if we take away the use of their credit card for these ancillary expenses, they're not gonna be happy, because they know they're gonna get reimbursed. But guess where all the, guess where all the points accumulated on their credit card?
So they would still be using their own credit card for if we had a per diem policy. So I think you might be conflating the two. Because the reality is, if you have a per diem, if you have a per diem policy and they're claiming per diem, they're not gonna be using a county credit card to pay for that meal and also get the per diem. They are doing one or the other. So if you if you have a per diem policy, they are only taking the per diem.
But yeah, that's right, but my thought is it isn't broken right now. They turn in their receipts and then we get reimbursed.
You're exactly right, but I just told you about my steak dinner, because I'm excited, because I'm on the county's diet.
Then we beat on them for turning in a two-dollar voucher for a cup of coffee.
Well, here's, Sam, here's what I'm gonna tell you about that. Most of those people, most, oh, but most. When we look at here, their salary up again a hundred thousand plus all the benefits. If an individual cannot, I'm sorry, I gotta beat on this one. If an individual with that kind of an income cannot afford a five-dollar damn uh donut, a four-dollar coffee, he should either ask for a raise or go find a job that pays him. Now, that's my take on it. I just.
But I thought that was the one thing we were trying to fix.
Yeah, this isn't fixing it, this is opening it up for whatever. But go ahead, it'll be four to one, I understand that.
No, don't say that.
But I'm not, but I'm not.
You might be surprised what's happening on this end of the aisle here.
Okay, well, tell us what's happening on that.
No, I'm fine with just leaving it like it is. And was this go with this credit card for a while, see if that, and then we'll go maybe this other one. We do it two at once, I don't like that. I like the the credit card I'm okay with, I think it'll probably be okay. There'll be some hiccups, I mean, you all remember when some high official took advantage of his credit card, okay, we all know. And so, you know, it's hu- human nature, you know. But anyway, besides that, but I'm fine with keeping this other like it is for a while, then if this credit card works all right, we bring this back up for discussion. That's how I feel, that's how I'm gonna.
Sounds like there's three to two, no matter what, so it doesn't matter what. It's all good for me. Um so just so I'm understanding the direction from the commission, you just adopted your credit card policy. You're essentially asking me to cease on on developing a per diem policy and a travel policy. Am I understanding you correctly?
That's the way I feel.
Okay. And then essentially, it's gonna be, so what guidance do you give to your department heads, just for discussion sake? What guidance do you give to your department heads to give to their employees when they are traveling in terms of what is an appropriate meal to be requesting reimbursement on?
That they'll have turned their tickets like they've done here for fifty years and go from there.
So do you approve seventy-five-dollar dinner?
I think there's a number in our handbook. I think it's thirty.
Pull it up right now, I do not believe there is. Andrew's listening to us, aren't you? Are you there?
I think there's a number.
I don't, I don't see Andrea online.
She's not, let me pull up to the.
You don't miss you? That's gonna give you a good, a good old boy if you had it.
Doug, use your hands, his, you got your briefcase with the handbook?
Oh, I probably.
What was our most re- most recent revisions of twenty twenty-three? All right, okay, so if we're looking at twenty twenty-three, most most uh most recent revision of your employee handbook.
I think it's thirty-three.
There is one use of a dollar section in the entirety of the handbook, and that is um for insurance policies are fifty dollars. You do not have gadgets on travel.
Just search meal cost.
Reimbursement for travel expenses. Travel by personal vehicle or reimbursed by the mileage rate. County will reimburse employees for the actual cost incurred by reasonable meals and lodging expenses, including room, parking, tax, and charges up to Musk, as well as miscellaneous travel expenses, such as taxi charges, reasonable tips, which are incurred while traveling on county business. So you have, I um. Uh you have said that it needs to be reasonable meals and tips up to twenty percent. And that if there's a meal provided at a function, whether it be a conference, uh or otherwise, the employees are expected, that participate are expect, except that, yeah, excuse me, expected to participate in that group meal at no additional cost to the county. So you have said uh no alcohol and a reasonable meal.
And no meal if something's provided.
And no meal if something's provided.
And is there a lower limit to that? If I go to the dollar menu and buy a cup of coffee or a brelo, you guys can compete and go.
Any, it's reasonable, better not.
I've I've never ordered a tomahawk steak, I see it there all the time.
They're on sale, yeah.
Oh, yeah, do you guys, do you, what do you guys think? Do you mind? Okay, so I guess.
Now, I know where it's gonna be like.
Tomahawk steak is two hundred dollars. Okay, so I think that's it for my agenda items, unless you guys have more for me? So I think Jessica's gonna steal some of my time. I would yield my time to the.
Uh just a a small thing, uh Chairman and Commissioners, I had a um an email come through from the Sheriff's Office with some old um old invoices that a local business had sent almost a year late. Um it's not huge amounts, but just kinda wanted to put that out at Clayton's time to see if if you saw something come through with a date that was a year old. I mean, I'd be happy, I didn't want to mention the local business in the meeting, but thought if I put it out there to you in an email, if you wanted to look it over, um but just kinda looking to Clayton for legal advice if it was to be rejected, I don't.
Some reason it was a year late?
Just an apology was on there that it was late, that they didn't believe that we had received them, and so here they were.
If you do, the policy would take care of that. It's a master service agreement with all of our vendors that say if your invoice is more than a hundred and eighty days after service is rendered, um the county is no longer liable to pay.
Do we have that in place already, Clayton? It looks like um. Uh one of them is a hundred and sixty-six, sixty-seven, the other's five hundred and forty-four, thirty-seven. Assuming that these are the only ones.
Same company?
Yes.
We have one vendor that was only wanting to submit invoices once a year.
I don't know.
The lunch people.
Oh, the lunch people?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, face that's not going out of business.
What's been our practice on paying invoices that are all a year? I don't know, I remember one coming before us.
That's pretty sketchy.
Is there a, all the departments, that's all?
Um it was uh law enforcement, um road and bridge, landfill. Yeah, it was a few of them.
Just kinda like that. Dust bust yourself, remember? About fifty showed up. They changed offices. Sold out, yeah, sold out.
Where are they from?
It's just the local business in Pinedale.
To prove they did do the work or whatever there, and that's proof, but didn't fail. Didn't look back to see if they resold them.
I I received them from the different departments, so I can just quadruple check with the departments that are signing off on their vouchers that we never paid them. Um and then go from there, send you the email, so, but be on the lookout, they they will be in the next, um at the next meeting for approval.
That works. Yeah, at this point in time, I'd like to move into execution of session. Um what is this? Uh item? Clayton, one, six, four, oh, five, each, Roman numeral nine.
A Roman nine, yes.
Thank you. Have a motion. Have a motion, if you're second, have a motion second, all in favor?
I know.
Even set up.
Hey. Clayton to work on a purchase. I'd like to make a motion to allow Clayton to work on a purchase agreement on this proactive building. If approved, allow Chairman Bernard to sign it between meetings.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion was forward. I think that takes care of. Clayton, next is Janice.
Um, I have my report before you, um, there are a lot of red lines online, there's a lot more that's happened since then. Um, so if you'd like to bring, I can just get through the main focus of what you have before you and talk about the lessons. Um, a question came up during our AI training, or it was actually mainly after our AI training. About that NACO AI West Regional Forum that's on November thirteenth and fourteenth in Provo. Um, the question was, should we be taking more of those pilot program participants to that training? I have tried to call NACO directly, I tried to call, um. President Avatni from, who is the NACO West Region President, I have not gotten any information back on what that training entails. Other than what just shows on the agenda, so I don't know how you'd like to plead on that.
Were you Jeremiah to maybe leverage and get, and get us in touch with somebody?
Give that a shot, yes. Um, and then Chairman Bernard, you had said maybe you wanted to go, but I haven't seen.
Actually, I'll pass, we have two important members calling and. We'll minimize costs.
I'll, I'll stay home if you want to go.
I'm not going to get your, your, your way.
Alright, so I worded out to Jeremiah on that, um.
Nice. I'm fine.
The comments are still in the way on the notice of intent on the Raspings R and P, we received an email from Tristan, which WCCA. To confirm that they are covering the things that we want to cover for our purposes in their letter for all the, um. Counties and Sam and I went over that this morning with R briefly on the way here, and we felt like it can cover. What some electronic would like covered on that. So I guess I would just ask that you authorize the Chairman Stein's comments between meetings on that, um, Raspings R and P.
Can you mark that? The Chairman Stein, R and P comments now.
Do the motions in seconds?
Second.
All in favor, uh, any opposed?
And then, um, there are also comments open on the public land rule, which was. Um, the conservation landfill rule where they were putting. Conservation as a use equal to other multiple uses. And we were. Opposed to that previously, I presume that stays the same or still opposed, and you want comments from some accountant on that?
By stance, we still the same conservation is a part of all uses, conservation is not standing use. Of the land or is part of all uses, um, that should be included in all uses. But not necessarily a standalone use of the land.
And would you like comments once the white comes through?
I think it's the form. It's the same way that is.
The hands get to me.
It was more than just.
Go ahead, alright, and I don't have written here when those are due, I believe we would still have. And I believe we could authorize that in the next meeting, but those comments. Um, I missed the most recent Colorado Advisory Committee meeting. But I think there was some discussions previously, did you guys want to have maybe Mike Hen or Mike Vickery come and talk to you? About those meetings, what they learned in those meetings?
If they have to have a decision made here by the eleventh of November.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you want to have. Someone come talk to you. This super.
Well, I think it'd be good if I, I know I explained a little bit, I don't. Someone would be. One of the two mics.
One of the two mics.
Would be good.
That, and would you like that on your next agenda?
Please.
Um, I wanted to let you know that on December first. And I did, um, cattle emergency management today, but Haley with Pinedale was, um. Someone reached out to her about a discovery meeting to review base level and engineering blood study data. And to discuss blood mitigation funding and effort reading great divide water set shed. Um, you may recall that probably two years ago, we were kind of reaching out to FEMA Region Eight saying, when are we going to update our blood maps? Uh, common knowledge, we were following that. And we kept being told, they let us know as soon as they were having these meetings. I asked if this is that same thing, and they said it likely is FEMA Region Eight that will be coming to this, so. Tendatively marked December first on your calendar as, as, um, essential meeting for that. Another issue that's come up is you recall that we gained an extra board member on the aquatic center ward when town Pinedale, um. Withdrew from that joint power board. And in so doing, both of those terms expire at the exact same time, so we have Stacy Elway and Andy Kerr on that board on behalf. But their terms expire at the same time, which is, I mean, you know, your terms are staggered, typically board terms are staggered so that you can retain something. Um, institutional knowledge, so to speak. I don't know if you would like to address that, or if you're good with that term expiration being the same and potentially losing both board members at the same time, starting with you. I kind of had reached out to Clayton about the possibility of making a change, you had previously had. Visitor assembly board was all the same, and by motion in one of your meetings, you staggered that term, but it was at the time of the vacation appointment. Not, not a normal term, so, but.
Well, that was also very important, they could control, this is the joint power board, power agreement says that they're all the same. It's towards both the town and county on the same term schedule, and so now if the town goes away, then you can go back to where it was.
So we don't have a choice?
Just have the two, and they just expire together, call it good.
Cause they, they did say, Amber replied when I talked to her about it, she said those board members were willing to adjust their terms. And she could talk to the rest of the board, maybe, so. I'll be back, but I don't know.
I'm sure they can amend their, like, they, they can amend the way that they're reading. I, I honestly don't know if they can amend it or not, but.
I'm good with them expiring at the same time, and if it's their discretion, if they choose on their board, but. It might be, there's, there's a deal back to.
Yeah, it's good to have. Okay, um, Jenna Montgomery had contacted me because there had been some discussion about, um, potential new IT hire going into that space. Upstairs across the upper office that Chairman Bernard, I went and looked at. There is some equipment that's always by Supreme Court administrative office in there, so. We. It there is. We, it's not that we can't use that office, but we need to give them time to get their equipment moved, it wasn't noticeable, but it was there.
Okay.
So anyway, she just wanted to have a little bit of a heads up so that she can have a conversation with it, if the county does decide to use that space for something.
Why are you saying things that you say? Yeah, it's potentially extending an awkward on that position, um, and it's going to take approximately months to go through clearance on that. And so. I think we should be moving our step out of that room unless these things come up with a different room.
Okay, so I'll talk to Lisa, and if she's, I'm going to come up with a different space than what Jen and I'll, suddenly you can talk again.
Ideally, um, additional person could be, um, part of Lisa's office and all of that, we're getting. More things to maybe look over for itself.
Um, Commissioner Vickery has agreed to attend the University of Wilding, uh, for educator. Interviews.
Is a warning.
Tomorrow from nine to three, yeah. I had a note about a popo letter, did you get Sam to sign that popo letter?
Yes.
And. I just wanted to let you know that, um, we started an inter, inter, interdepartmental training. With a lot of new staff in the clerk's office and Haley's office. We just thought it would be a good idea collectively to get together and find out what everybody's doing and how we can. Benefit each other and, and work toward a common good. So we had that first meeting last Friday, and we're going to try to do it every other week, and. A, a big part of that was Haley getting questions from a variety of places and. And being told that she has things that she doesn't necessarily have that might be in Jessica's office, and so we're going to try to work on that. Any of you want to come to those meetings every other week at, on Friday, um. I don't, I don't want to be, I'm not a page just to you, but I'm going to let you know that it is going on, we are trying to work together and, and make things better for your constituents. So, and then the only other thing that I had, unless you had questions about what you had already received. Was, um, you had your budget discussions with two departments today, and so I wondered if you could let me know who you want on the next. Next meeting agenda, so that we can get that documentation prepared for you.
John, do you have any preference on who we pull up next? Great, let's do a road and bridge. And. IT. And then on the next, uh, agenda. Next meeting. Let's talk. Received an email, I think it was. In a late meeting to catch up with everything, seven, the polls are four, open dub training. Figure out before the board.
Our hands all open, open dub training, we.
Well, you know how to use AI, so you don't need anything.
I'll just ask it.
Um, we, we have opened up, but as I talked with just different people, there hasn't, hasn't been training on open job in a number of years. Except for passing from one person to another to another in the course of events. First mystery passing doesn't fully recognize what the system well or will do. And so. We have a tool in front of the departments, some of the departments. That may or may not know how to fully. Use it. Okay, um, thank you for that. Janice, uh, we can go to, uh, malt beverage permits, accessory, accessory and pressure.
Chairman, uh, Leila does not have any NOVCs and Emily did not, uh, oh, she has one bond, that's right there, and I'll pass it along if you wanted to make much.
Most motion to approve is surety bond for Valerie Williams. Big funny cemetery.
Hold on a second. Hold, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It mostly passed. Nothing for Emily, and if there are the assessor and pressure, we can roll into old business. Old business, um, we have. We took out our required. Notification of employee pay rates in the Rock of Mine. Thank you. He became Subiconian. Did not, uh, subscribe to the Rock of Mine, there's a name is that. We've been helpful, several, I couldn't say how many people had a request that if we put in the Pinedale Roundup, so we have it, uh. On record for the people that live here. I contacted the Pinedale Roundup. And typically that, our ad runs approximately six hundred fifty, seven hundred dollars, and they would do it at half price. Revolve three and a quarter. Question that comes up is, are the commissioners interested and willing to rerun that in the Pinedale Roundup?
Well, I think we kind of made the determination to support it best we could.
Yes. Hey.
I'm good with it.
And motion to rerun the, um. Required publication in the Pinedale Roundup for a second time. Uh, and a reduced rate with the Pinedale Roundup. Is there a motion made on that?
Right to that motion.
Is there a second? Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Good, um. Any other old business by the commissioners?
I decided to have one question, Andrea Jean sent out to deal on IT pay scale, if we wanted to create one or re. Go different, and then slightly respond, I think we should.
Okay, I stopped by talking, I was great, um, everyone recall that email? Does anyone have a preference?
Well, I mean, did she make it offer to this person that she's, I mean, what she.
Is just creating the.
Oh.
Uh, pay scale.
But I mean, we go through that every time and then change it, so when we get the employee.
I think there ought to be a pay scale, I mean, that's a drilling division, turnover.
Andrea Jean, are you online?
She was. Oh, there she is.
So what did she want?
Are you, you were unmuted, Andrea?
I just see you all in the pay scale.
I don't know if she's ready to talk.
We got a lot of. They got there, you get qualified, but still. But I don't know where you start or where you end, but, you know.
I depend on that. He's going to say.
It is correct, Andrea Jean, are you there? Andrea Jean? So the question comes in, we don't know what could have been seventeen. Person that this job was offered, but we set a pay scale the day for X and it comes in.
Yeah, I don't know that we need set it today, I think we need instructor to go down, so there is a scale.
Andrea, Andrea Jean, are you there?
There's people in her office, but she said she.
Pick them out. Andrea, you're unmuted. Can you hear me?
There you are.
Hello.
But she has no background, because she had people in her office, so let her know what you.
Okay, we were talking about an IT position in your email regarding. uh, pay scale, development of a pay scale for IT.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so if you want, I can get a pay scale, talking to Casey and Lisa, we can come up with one. That is my preference to have them on a pay scale, but it's whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah. Yeah. That's where we're gonna start.
Uh, you ascertain what the beginning pay would be?
We, we haven't sat and talked about it, but Lisa put the position out at sixty five to eighty five and Casey put his out I believe seventy to ninety, so we were thinking sixty five, depending on if we put them both on the same scale or if we do a separate sheriff IT.
I'd put them all on the same scale, yeah.
That's also my preference. So, starting at
Are they going to be dealing with the same IT issues or will one be more network and the other more desktop?
So it sounds like the IT under Lisa would be more desktop to start and then start to learn more of the other stuff. Um, is my understanding, she's not here, and I haven't been able to sit down with them both together. But we could still do a scale with different, um, levels uh, needing different requi- like certifications or requirements before moving on to a next level.
So a level one could be a desktop person and a level three could be, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, and I can put those specifications right on the pay scale.
That's an excellent see.
Good work, we're, we're setting her in the old corner, but you're gonna have somebody come in, like that. It's been a cause of fact, because they gotta find some place to house and such. And so if somebody that they're locally comes in, that pay scale could be lower, it could still be and then double two then. Somebody coming from out in the country, you gotta have to be a little bit higher to afford to be moving, so to speak, so how do you balance that?
Were you able to hear that question, Andrea?
I wasn't.
I'm talking to your mic, I think.
Well, I gotta turn it off too.
Oh, that would help.
My mic run out of juice. So the question I have is folks coming in here are gonna require, I would think, a little higher pay scale with somebody that might in fact still live here. It's the best that's reasonable.
It does, but we should still base the pay scales off of, uh, their level of experience or uh, their education, things like that, if we start basing off where they're coming from, that would change all of our pay scales. If they have a pay scale, there's room for negotiation, I suppose.
What, what happens is if you offer a local or reduced salary versus the person coming in, we're discriminating against your locals.
No, no, I, I guess, I didn't say that, but you know, what I'm, what I said was I think what I meant was, we're gonna draw somebody from outside, we're gonna have to, the scale's gonna have to be a higher. Not necessarily
At the hospital.
Folks here, you're just, you're gonna have that scale, your passion's gonna have to be higher, in other words, if they put it out there seventy five thousand, regardless who gets you, the person you'd like to see come from outside and look at that, say, I don't believe so, but the person here, and again, I can take that. That's, that, that's what I'm saying, so wherever that scales at, you're gonna have to be able to, at least I think make it so that there's an interest from somebody outside rather than just inside, I mean, the, the we could make the choice if it comes to that, but the ultimate choice is gonna be made by the salary schedule. I believe for those who would be an IT.
So yes, please move forward with, uh, salary schedule on the IT position.
Okay, I will meet with them, we don't, we have until next budget time. Or bef- around that time, so I'll meet with them and we'll come up with what we um, discuss and we'll present it to you guys.
Don't you kinda need to have it established so those two that you're bringing in, you know where they land on it as in they're one or two or three?
They, they've already offered the positions at certain rates, so we'll take that into consideration, one did ask about a scale already, which we had discussed during interviews, but, um, kinda brought it more to the forefront, which is why I sent that email. It's Lisa is talking to her right now, I believe, um, and I actually haven't, again, I haven't been able to talk to Lisa, so I don't know where we're at with that, but I think she just kinda gave her the range for now and told her that we were working on the scale.
Excellent, thank you Andrea.
No problem.
Okay, item I have down for continuing conversation is the a direction you provide to planning and zoning on the editing of the regulations. Last week, we talked about Doug Vickery had a, a list of suggestions. Let's say I'm gonna bring you come up with something, I don't know, I don't have a chance to.
I would like to make without, look, I'd like to make probably one. Take, take one of the suggestions, Sam brought, but again, I just, I haven't really thought about that one, but the one where industrial need to be close to town. Or the subdivision need to be close to town. And Sam brought up a very valid point that that eliminated somebody living further out, if you got the, the property right close to town. That would be more than likely enhance the value of yours and it would take away from the person outside. But I, that's kinda what you thought about since I was, so with that in mind, I would, you know, I would want to turn it up and pull that out of the mix and maybe shot.
Yeah, and I think what I said, you know what, I get the whole concept of developing from municipalities out, right? But I don't like a concrete rule stating that that's the way it has to be, maybe it may get easier for anybody that's closer to municipalities to, um, do something, but anybody on the outside still has an option to come and have that discussion. Whether it makes sense or not, um, not not just stating the fact that, okay, if you have this property that's within one mile of the municipality, that's the only place in Sub County that can that's been developed, and then it moves over to the other one, right there, you're, you're picking one person to be the winner, if I own that, that land right there, that land just went up by ten fold.
Yeah, because I certainly agree with that, that's like that's pretty easy to have with that judge, but we
But I, I'm not opposed to making it easier for somebody to develop that's within that area. Than it is harder to develop that's not within that area, that still has to come and have a discussion to be, to say, you know, there's Absolutely, which you're doing ultimately by, um, enforcing that is whoever owns that property right now next to town, win the lottery. Correct. You're welcome, I said.
Well, one of the other, other reasons for bringing it closer obviously is that it's the amenities that are close to a town and they wouldn't be, say, forty, fifty miles out. Uh, when you start looking at the subdivision, it, up there like that, and all of a sudden you're looking at all the other things, the buyer, sheriff, or EMS, uh, every, everything that the county does now just adds to the expense for the way you get in order to serve them. And so that was part of the reason I threw that in there, but could be, that's pretty easy to do.
Uh, Janess, can we, would you be kind enough to add or just, I'm sorry, add a P and Z discussion uh, on the next agenda at least? Uh, we will nail this down, put it forward to planning and zoning and get after this. You're any other old business of mayor, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you, did you care to address the commission or just as a visitor?
Just here as a visitor, I'd just like to say thank you guys for coming down here still on our end and we do appreciate it, coming down, thank you yourself available for us down.
Thanks for what?
Like an opportunity, I always like to say thanks for coming down, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, that should address the old business, uh, open the floors for public comment to those here or online.
Haley has her hand up.
Hello Haley.
Hi. Oh, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to, I was just listening in to the conversation about the planning and zoning and code and I did just want to mention that the, the, um, commission right now is focused on the tower code. And we are doing a special meeting in a few weeks to discuss that and then planning on discussing it again at the November twentieth meeting. I, I feel like given where we are with the tower code, the soonest it's going to be ready for possible adoption is going to be in December at the earliest. There are several things that we are working through as far as like the legalities and working with Clayton on this, because there are several things when it comes to tower codes of making sure we are following the federal regulations. Not only our codes, but yes, looking at all of the other FCC regulations on top of our code. So I feel like looking at the whole code in general, we're not quite there yet. But we have included that in our agendas in case we have time to talk about it, but we have not had the opportunity to discuss the code in general at this point. Um, but I definitely am open to your suggestions of how we move forward with that. But as of right now, I feel like the tower code may take us at up, up and through the beginning of December possibly.
I appreciate your, uh, explanation of that Haley, thank you, uh, what we're talking about in conjunction with what you're doing is for the commissioners to sit down and go through a couple of different lists, um, identifying from our perspective that are important, uh, items that shouldn't be included in the planning and zoning regulations and what's acceptable. So what we're working on, I believe, is going to be outside of what you're currently addressing.
Okay, that makes sense, does this coincide at all with the, the land use? Oh man, I'm going to, the comprehensive master plan for the county, or is this just a separate review with the county commissioner's thoughts?
Pertaining to thoughts, yes.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome, and I appreciate your, um, input on this, but thank you. Is there any other um, old business that anyone would care to address? Have I missed anything? Excellent. With that, uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm motioning here. The motion by Commissioner Bradley was the second. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor, or I oppose, give us a one.